The message that property tax revenue is increasing to help us cover public safety. Primarily, and no matter how we look at it, if you look at Councilmember Al Shire's work when $110 change, you could see like $70 of the 110. If you didn't want to say, look at just the increase. Every dollar that comes in, how much? So $110 coming in extra. And he had how much went to just police and fire. I guess the question is, you know, everybody very much supports public safety, but how and what manner? Do you do that by reducing other services? Do you do that by reducing incentives? Do you do that by increasing revenue? I mean, I think ultimately, the comment, look, the suggestion is to get more services, you shouldn't have to pay more. The reality is when I have a small vehicle and a car and I go to the gas pump and then I buy an SUV that's a gas guzzler that takes gallons more, when I go to the gas pump and I use more, I expect to pay more. So I know that it's a hard message. But again, and if, if anyone needs extra copies of what Councilmember Al Shire printed out last time, you can even refer, I can refer you back to another page in the budget book, but this is laid out, again, very thoughtfully and specifically to break down 110.
So with the Invest Hagerstown right now, it costs 38 cents.
Of the 110?
Of the 110 dollars. So it costs 38 cents of the city's taxpayer dollars.
In that 500 cents?
To keep an invest, investment program. And remind, I'd like to remind the body that on April 15th, we had a work session, work session on Invest Hagerstown, where we spoke about the $500,000 budget for the redevelopment grants, redevelopment grant. And other, other grants to go towards this, this program. In addition, we had a very great conversation about the work that Invest Hagerstown does, or actually the support it does, with helping homeowners getting assistance. They get first, we had 40, 40 some homeowners for the first time. Remind the body that first time homeownership is a goal of ours.
Well, also we would say that-
I wasn't finished. But, but homeownership is, is one of the goals that we unanimously approved for the strategic year. So I just want to make sure that's known, that we praise the team for having a program where it can provide generational wealth to, to many families that otherwise wouldn't be able to have reported to through this program and it's costing the taxpayer 38 cents.
Of the 100?
Of the 110 dollars.
But could you leave that in? You're not cutting the whole program. Would you, could you leave that one in?
Is that up for deciding right now as a body, each of us? If we want to keep all of it or, or use-
Well, he only proposed $500,000.
Oh, there's $500,000.
Okay. So then we need to discuss-
Yeah.
If that's something we want to do and from which pocket of the-
Each penny is $359,000. So 500 is almost a penny and a half.
So I'll let the majority speak.
Okay, so this is not an easy discussion, right? But this is a mandatory one. Sorry, guys, I wrote down just a few things here. For the record, for the record, the city of Frederick has not increased taxes in 12 years. However, the county of Frederick just approved a tax increase from a dollar six to a dollar 11, which is a 4.7 increase that the city of Frederick is going to have to encompass anyways. We all have questions. We all have questions regarding where can we cut, how can we cut? Collectively, we all need to advance and move forward towards one direction here today. I understand that cutting, I'm sorry, increasing taxes not only affects everyone who is sitting at the table today, but it affects all the residents as well. But we have to keep in mind that the budget cuts do affect our city staff and our departments. I go on to say that the tax has not, the property tax rate has not increased in Hagerstown since 2019. Our current rate is at a dollar point 002. And what's being proposed is a dollar point 05, which is again, only a 5.5%. The percent, cents, I'm sorry. This increase will not only generate 2.2 million dollars in revenue, but it will help offspring some of our debt that we have, which is looking like 735K. So with, with, with the bottom line, what I'm trying to get to is I, I sat home and I, and I couldn't sleep at night. I came up with two resolutions that I wanted to bring forth to everyone here today. The first one was, let's go ahead and move on with the 5.5 cent increase. If we can all agree to cap it for fiscal year 30 or fiscal year 28 and bring that back. That's the first one I came up with. The second one I came up with is if we're going to move in the direction of cutting, cutting, I want to make sure that we are not cutting anything that's considered a core investment. So anything that's going to have an impact on our services. So if we can, if we're going to focus on cutting, that's the priority. If we're going to focus on the increase, I need to remind everyone that, again, we have not increased since 2019. That's about seven years. Washington County Commissioners have announced they are not increasing taxes for fiscal year 25. So to get everyone to calm down, I would say, let's go ahead with the increase, but cap it. Cap it at fiscal year 28, cap it at fiscal year 30. It's been capped before. Maybe not in Washington County, but it's been capped before. So those are the two resolutions that I came up with at home. And I'm really stressed out.
Yeah, and like I said, it's, we all want city services. I don't think that's the question. It's not that we don't want the state to do well. It's just, you know, we do pay very high taxes here in Hagerstown compared to other municipalities. You know, and I, that's why I chose to move here is because it was lower in taxes compared to what I was paying in Alexandria. And I didn't move here because of the stadium or the field house. And it's great, we have those. I'm not against that, but quality of life issues like that, you know, we have the cost of everything going up, utilities to everything. And I just, you know, after I heard everybody on Monday, I cannot, within my good conscience, support a tax increase. And the body can vote the way they feel is best for them and they think the way the city's going forward. But, and it's hard decisions and that's why we're having that discussion. And that's nothing to get city staff or anybody, you know, but that's why we got elected, is to make these decisions for the city and everybody else. And, and I do think staff means wealth for that and, you know, but we also hear from the residents every day and they, their concerns and they're telling me how expensive it is here. And I work for them. They are my boss. Ultimately, we were here Monday night and that's who I answer to. And that's all, you know, if anything, it's great you guys have staff and you're doing this, but you know, I have to hear what the residents say. And I've knocked on over 10,000 houses last year. I've heard loud and clear about the issues. And that's why we had an election. We have three new members and a new mayor. And I know it's difficult, but that's just where we're at.
So I do just want to remind everybody, when you go to a chart and you look strictly at tax rates and you look at all municipalities across the state of Maryland, Councilmember Al Shire, correct me, how many municipalities have paid fire services across the state of Maryland? And so when you're looking at flat numbers and you're looking at nothing but rate, they might not have paid fire services. They might not have police services. And if they do, it might not be to the level and the extent that we do. A lot of other cities rely on the counties for a high amount of services. So the other thing that has to be taken into consideration is the other side of the equation to how much money out of your pocket. It is the tax rate and the value and the assessed value of homes. And unfortunately, within Hagerstown, we are one of the lower across the state of Maryland. So when you compare us to the larger cities and the cities closer to DC, the value of our homes are less. You can see it in purchase price, right?
People don't make the salaries here like they do in Montgomery County. So that's a consideration as well.
The only other thing I would say, as far as utilities, yes, I understand that the city has increased utilities. Be mindful that we, in, in the budget book, we do a comparison, right? We compare city utilities with others, other neighboring governmental agencies as well as private agencies. And by comparison, we are still considerably lower. And I, we can certainly look at those pages as well.
So wait, Councilmember Flagerty, on that note, to what you just said, yes, Montgomery County raises their tax, their property tax rate annually.
Yeah.
So, you know, that kind of speaks a lot to what I said. We have not raised it since 2019. So within seven years' time, the city and staff, the departments, they're doing what they can with that same number of allocated funds for seven years.
Again-
And so much has changed in seven years. A lot of debt has acquired, a lot of growth has acquired.
That, and I wasn't elected during that time. So I mean, I'm mindful for what's going forward. But yeah, I get it. So, and you made some really good points. And I applaud you for doing the research to do that. So you did a really good job.
Thank you.
I was also thinking, looking over the sheet that Councilmember Al Shire handed out, what it looks, what would it look like if we took a portion from each one of, like, for example, the, the golf course, the pool? What does it look like to, even if we're taking a portion of that from each one of, each one of them? Like how much, how much would that accumulate? Or even if it's just beneficial to do away with?
So if you close the pool, we, we have full-time employees that would probably be reallocated across your other parks and amenities. You have seasonal and part-time staff that would be laid off. You have a lease for golf carts that we are required to pay whether the golf courses open or not. So there are some things at the golf course that we would be required to continue to pay, but some expenses that we could certainly reduce.
So the golf course-
Right. So then, do you, are you planning to do it for a year? Which means, are we going to upkeep the greens? Or are you doing it longer term to sell it? Because you wouldn't want to, and I don't want to speak for staff. So I will say, look, excellent questions. We can, you can hear from the experts instead of just hearing from me if you prefer. But if you close the golf course for a season and you do not, you let the greens go, and then with the plan and intention to reopen it next year, you're going to have to address the condition of the grass.
And like you said, either way, there's things that we would still have to pay whether if it's in use or not.
And I think Councilmember Al Shire did that about two weeks ago when he made some of those numbers available. The same with Potterfield Pool. You could look to close it for the season, but it's the only one within the city.
Right.
I guess just trying to think of what each one brings in and if it's beneficial to keep it or not. I guess I was looking, you know, thinking on that lines.
Yeah, can we, can we further discuss the, the dollar amount of that impact for everyone's awareness?
And I also want to say, we, 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 we clearly look at a lot of what the citizens want. That's why we, you know, did the budget for the public safety. So I just want, you know, to be mindful of that as well. So I know that was one of, one of your biggest concerns was, you know, making sure that that was available.
Yeah, like, you know, like I said, I do support, we need to have lease, we need all those things. But I don't, I believe it's a dichotomy of a wrong view of, oh, we've got to increase taxes to have them. When we have other departments that should submit some areas they can cut to, not police. So, you know, I'm all for that. It's, you know, I just feel like not one person was supporting this tax increase on Monday and they had their say. And I feel like they very strongly told us what they felt. And as a body, we should really look at that. And again, you guys vote the way you want, what's best for you, but I heard a lot of folks Monday, and I hear more from them, and I hear them throughout the city about all the things going on. And it's, yeah, and I mean, that's what, elections are hard and that's why we were elected to make these decisions. Because it's great city staff can present things in front of us, but we have to make, we have the buck stopped with us. And we have to decide if we're going to raise it.
I mean, as somebody who has won twice first, I listen to the people too. And how I govern, yes, is definitely based on feedback from the community. But what I try to do in my role is to inform and educate our citizens on how government works and to also give them opportunity to speak, yes. But as I said on Tuesday, after the hearing, I thanked everybody for their emails, for coming out and being engaged in both vocally, in the county, the state, federal, you name it. However, I would like, I would get to this eventually, but some of the comments made were just not true. That's how they feel, yes, but it's not true. A lot of comments, as we talk about cutting things and having events and amenities for people to do, the city of Hagerstown has a lot to do. There were several people that said, there's nothing to do here. It's nothing like Frederick. That's not true. Golf course is something to do. The pools is having an environment for the families to come out and enjoy the warm weather. It's something to do. Our events that we host as a city, the events that we've helped sponsor as a city, is something to do. We now have a actual flyer of everything that's happening over the weekend. There's plenty to do. We have a downtown Facebook page that has plenty of engagement, plenty of viewers, which is listed in our budget book, there's things to do. So I commend people for coming in and speaking, but a lot of the things is just not true. Speaking of the water, yes, we increased the water as a previous administration. But remember, going back to our strategic plan for the year, we're revisiting the wastewater and water rate model, that we are still in the, in the discussions to fix that. We acknowledge that. We're going to be moving forward to see what else we can do. There was mentioning about the, the trash. Yes, it went up, but we also remember we have to add owner stormwater fee that was governed by the state. So yes, there's public comments that we accept, but also there's facts. And, and, and that's where I'm going to put my now soapbox on to say that, thank you for your comments, but also the reality is, some of it's not true. But yes, we do have to do our part as elected body to make these difficult decisions, but we also have to base it on the data and the facts.
And I respect your opinion, Councilmember Burnett, but I'm not here to debate what the residents said was true or not. I'm here to debate how they felt and nobody supported a tax increase on Monday.
The numbers say what the numbers say.
Of course they do. And that's why we're in this discussion where we've had people talk about not to increase them and why. And that's why we're at. So any day, you could talk about all the wonderful events downtown, but if people don't want a tax increase, they have a right to say that.
I'm not saying they're not. What I'm saying is, you can't say there's nothing to do, but it's plenty to do.
I don't, I never said there's another, I mean, any day, I don't care about the events downtown if I'm paying more in taxes and we have a lot of other nice facilities here, which is great. But I didn't come to Hagerstown because that. I, I chose Hagerstown because of the cost of living, like I mentioned before. It wasn't because of our million dollar facilities, all these wonderful events downtown. It's great. But any day, people choose to move here because it's a lot cheaper to live compared to Montgomery and Frederick County and we're getting growth.
We're going to agree to disagree, Councilmember, and that's completely fine, but I'm telling you what I heard and how I'm interpreting what I heard. It's not about to be. It's about the facts. Okay, guys, I, I, okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm sorry for calling you guys. Councilmembers. Bottom line, bottom line, let's stick to the bottom lines. Bottom line, are we moving forward with this increase? Would you guys agree to cap it? For fiscal year 28 or fiscal year 30?
I'm hoping for that, but we also wanted to see if we take from each one of these in the green,
Right.
what would that, what would that pot look like? I would like to see that. And-
So I guess, I guess with Michelle, Michelle, what do you need? You need specifics, right? You need actual specific dollar amounts.
Well, no, that's why I said, if we took a, a portion, whatever that portion looks like, um, you're the, you're the numbers lady. If we took a portion of each, or would it be just beneficial to close one? However, whatever that looks like.
So, I don't know if it will help you or not, but in section one, there is a chart, page 12, that attempts to outline, and it's very microscopic. So if you get to section one, page 12, it is community amenities. And what we attempt to capture here, and we may not capture everything, is capture what we feel is more amenity driven with the knowledge that amenities are not created to be self-supporting and that we don't have to generate enough revenue, like at the farmer's market to pay for the farmer's market rate. So on the community amenity chart, section one, page 12, we're going to see second item down says Potterfield Pool. Right-hand column, you see fiscal year 26 budget, $93,500.
And you said section one, page 12?
Yes.
There it is.
On page 11. So good. So $93,500 is, is what we're estimating revenue to be at the pool. From the visitors, from the camps, from the very, various people across the community and others that utilize that. Direct operating expenses are 301,000. So if we're closing the pool, that revenue's going away. Some of that $300,000 can go away, but probably likely not all. We just approved a contract with the YMCA.
No, like it messes with summer camps. It just kind of interferes too much with summer. And sometimes that's the only thing that some kids have to do is go swimming. So you can still look at it. Even if, because I don't, I don't, I don't, how would you even take a portion of that?
That's what I'm going to, that's what I'm going to ask these days. The majority of the expense at the pool is the YMCA contract for lifeguards, for lifeguards and their overall management and oversight of the pool.
So we pay, let me make sure I understand. So we're paying for the YMCA's lifeguards?
The YMCA helps operate it.
Oh, the YMCA, okay.
So the city owns Potterfield Pool. It works history, uh, I, the history has been, that at times the C staff actually ran the pool. We hired managers, we hired the lifeguards, we hired the concession stand people. We did it all. And honestly, it became more and more problematic. There's lots of rules and regulations when you're running a pool, so you better know what you're doing. And for an operation that only operates basically two months out of the year, it's just getting increasingly difficult to find that staff. So over the years, we've hired a number of different contractors to do it. And there's been a variety of, the Y did it before. There was American something, something before my time. I can't remember their names. And the Y has been at the last four years. This is the fifth year of a five-year contract. And so the Y provides the management and the lifeguards of the pool itself. We hire seasonal staff that actually sit at the front desk and collect the revenue. So we do that part of it.
So that's the only thing that we do. So for example-
We do all the maintenance, of course, you know.
So to keep it open, why couldn't the Y just run it? Like completely? And wouldn't it take us-
They want money to do that.
I, I've tried to sell it to them for a dollar, but they wouldn't take it, so.
So they're really just doing-
They're a contractor for us. If we were on the pool, we have to have somebody run the pool for us. We're the owners of the pool. So they can't just do it. And the revenue would never cover their expenses. And that's why nobody would ever own it.
So no one really wants Potterfield? No, because it's more liability than a-
You lose money at it. You just do, you can't make money out of facilities open three months out of the year. You just can't.
Some pools don't make money.
They don't make money. They're an amenity to the public.
For example, do we know, do we know how many people, like, is there a way for we to see, for us to see data if it's really worth it?
Absolutely. What data do you want to see? The number of guests?
Like how many people-
Twenty-seven thousand a year. We report that, we report that every year in our weekly reports. We don't report revenues, because revenues reported in a vacuum or skew the numbers. You say, oh wow, we generated $93,000 in revenue. Yeah, but we spent $190,000 to the Y just to manage it. So unless you have the revenues and expenses, and we don't report those, we usually report how many people come to the pool, when it's been open and that sort of thing. And lately, what I've noticed in the last few years is June and July are very heavily used at the pool, but August usually starts dropping off. Kids go back to school for band camp, football and all the other sports that are happening.
So it's really only utilized them two months-
Two and a half months out of the year, yeah. Which will open in two weeks on Memorial Day, by the way.
Right. And, and, and I think that's, I think that's part of it. A lot of these ideas are really good ideas. Consolidating services and having conversations with the county. Excellent ideas and excellent, excellent suggestions. However, the reality is you're not going to accomplish that between now and May 23rd and May 30th, in which you have to make this decision.
So even cutting, even if that was a decision to let the pool go, it wouldn't even come, it wouldn't do anything with this.
It would, it, it could reduce some. But again, we already have the contract executed with the Y.
Yeah, there'd be some sort of financial that we'd have to pay them because they've already hired staff. I mean, they're gearing up for it.
Yeah, everybody's ready for summer.
Because we gave them that guarantee. Yeah, we just approved that. Yes.
So the golf course is also a losing proposition, unfortunately. It doesn't make money. We run our golf course. It's a nine-hole golf course. We have no manager, no system manager. We have no real management of the golf course. We use part-time and seasonal employees basically to run the clubhouse, to collect the fees and that sort of thing. We have two full-time employees that basically mow and upkeep the property. And we have to spend $20,000 a year, 25, in overtime just to stay up on it. Look at your yard right now and imagine you're mowing acres, not acres of that to a very specific height. And it takes, it takes a lot of labor to do that. And really, that's the expense. There's, yeah, we buy equipment every once in a while. But for the most part, the expense is the labor. But you can't play enough rounds out there to cover the expenses. And our rates are pretty comparable to everybody else. You raise them, you have less golfers. You lower them, you give them a few more golfers, but so we try to keep our rates, you know, comparable.
And what you said with the golf courses, even if we close it, we still have obligations with the golf carts?
Correct. That's a lease we cannot-
We have a five-year contract with them. It's about 25, $30,000 a year. Yes. Now, we, and it's actually through, it's a piggyback on the county.
You have to pay it. You have to buy it.
There are definitely, I think there's, I'd have to go back and look at the contract, but I'm sure there's financial penalties for pulling out.
You almost have to buy out the duration of the-
But as you said earlier, you let the golf course go for a year. Yeah, it would be, it would be very difficult to bring it back to a point that you could have a golf course account. You can't just let the grass grow. You have, I mean-
Sure, even if it's not there, we still got to mow the grass.
It's a big expense that-
Mow the grass.
I just, the city shouldn't. I mean, I heard, I know we run a golf course. I just feel like that's something, it's going to hurt us long-term. I just don't think long-term we should have that, but that's-
I understand that. And I, and there have been other councils in previous years, many years ago, that talked about closing it and selling it. And Councilman Al Shire can tell you that whole history. It is better than I do, but it's, um, you know, you have a few people here at night, you'd have the, the place filled. There's a lot of people very passionate about that golf course.
So while you're here, I do have a question because this was the other thing on the list. Can you explain, or maybe Christian, the Councilmember Al Shire, the contract we have with the ice rink?
Sure.
Like, because I know we don't own it.
We do own it.
We do own it.
We own the building.
We own the building.
We, we own the building.
But I thought we had some kind of partnership with the-
We do.
Okay.
So, and this is a long time before I came even, but my understanding is that somebody convinced the mayor council to construct an ice rink on city property. And so they did in 1997, I think it was. And shortly thereafter, that group, individual, company, whatever, folded. And so the city was obligated to pay off the ice rink. So we own a facility. It is built specifically as an ice rink, an ice rink only. So once we took it over, we tried to find a number of groups that would run it for us. And they struggled. The current group started in 2014. It's known as the Hagerstown Ice Amateur Athletic Association, the HI AAA. They're a nonprofit.
They are a nonprofit.
They have full-time employees that run the operations for the city. Again, the city could end the contract with them and hire our own staff, but that just means, it's just a different expense. The contract is they run it, they pay us $3,000 a month, $36,000 a year, which we now put into CIP to help fund equipment and that sort of thing. And we pay the utilities at about $85,000 to $90,000 a year, which is the gas, electric, you know, all that, water soon.
Right. So then the question is, because they also help fund a certain- Right. So then the question is because they also help fund a certain percentage of all the repairs?
Yes, there's three main product or items there that they fund or help fund. That's the dehumidification system, which we just replaced in the last three years using ARPA funds. They paid 25%. We paid 75%. The dashboards, which are the main boards that, that, you know, go around the rink itself, and the ice making equipment. And so the ice making equipment, well, there's three items in the contract saying we paid 75%, they paid 25%. The last estimate we got a budget number for replacing ice making equipment was $2.7 million.
Because if I remember correctly, when they was here, they said if something breaks again, they're not going to be able to replace it, correct?
The ice making equipment is run by two compressors that push the,
They had a hard time finding the,
Right. And all that equipment is over 25 years old. And as you would know, in equipment, that's pretty much its end of its useful life. Yeah. So we're coming to a point to make a decision of what, whether to replace the entire ice making equipment or not. And it is a huge expense, no question about it. For us and for the HI AAA, because they have a, they have a part in it.
Me personally, you know, I'm a business owner. I have over 1,500 residential customers. I have over 200 commercial customers. When my, when my workers ask for a raise, do I push that cost to the customer? Or do I figure out how to see if I can make cuts somewhere? And that's the first thing I look at. And I think Michelle wants from all of us specifics of what she wants to take a look at. I have come up with a couple, and I would like to see if you would look into it. Minus, I'm gonna say that minus public safety.
Define public safety, because everybody uses that term to mean something different.
The police department, fire department.
And does that mean everything? Tasers, K-9, uniforms, body cameras, maintenance unit?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Vehicles.
I'm not going that way. I'm going to a hiring freeze way. I know we have a lot of job opportunities on our website. Can we institute a hiring freeze? Because it seems to me the city's running just fine right now. But minus hiring, you know, with the police department and fire department, I'd like to keep that in. I'm just asking you to take a look at it.
We can look at it. We've had hiring freezes in the past. How long?
Well, I mean, we can revisit the next budget year.
Yeah. So hire freeze for an entire year?
No. Yeah.
Police. So when we had, he said no police and no fire. So when we have an engineer who leaves, and we only have one engineer across the city, we don't hire for that engineer position?
We could take a look at it base by base, but you know, there's a lot of job.
If that's the case, if somebody leaves, wouldn't,
The CFO leaves, are you going to replace the CFO position? I'm, I'm using this as you're saying an example. And I'm saying, I'm saying,
I'm saying as far as he said, like if somebody leaves from the police department, if that money, wouldn't that money still be there? And then they can replace that position. That's what, that's, that's what I was,
Yeah, I'm saying.
I'm not saying an additional position where you have to have additional money. I'm just saying if somebody leaves, then that money's already there, correct? Am I looking at it right?
So, so yes, but I think what the mayor is saying, hey, Michelle, can you get us $300,000 as people leave the entire year and you don't replace them? You don't replace them for the entire year and save that money for a year? Right?
Yeah, for instance, I,
Maybe I didn't understand.
For instance, I have two service techs that have, have left and went to another job. I have not hired anybody in their place. I have just moved people around or trained somebody else that's already inside of my organization to be able to take that position. So I'm just, I'm looking at it from that kind of standpoint. If it's, if the CFO quits, is there someone here that we could put into that position without hiring another person? That's one area I can live with. Is there anything in the general fund on CIP that we could look at as far as not doing every project?
Absolutely. Everything in the CIP.
Okay.
What I would say with a hiring freeze, it's hard to estimate, right? You never know which position is going to leave and the health insurance will cost a loan. I would caution us, we have union members. And why it sounds nice in theory that you're going to train somebody else to do a position that leaves that doesn't work across union positions. And we say police and fire, does that also mean the electric fund? And the line workers, who their money comes from the electric charges? Does it mean the water department? Does it mean the wastewater department? And then what I would, what I would say is this, and, and, and I say this as an employee, right? Because I am one. It is extremely difficult day in, day out to remind all of the departments, myself included, that we are one city of Hagerstown. We're not HPD, we're not HFE, we're not HLD. We are one collective community representative. We are the city of Hagerstown, and these are all the various services we provide. So it is extremely difficult when we ask the same groups over and over. And we cause, I don't want to say it, division, but we cause a lot of angst amongst the employee groups when we say hiring freeze, but only for certain departments. And you're expected to pick up the other's things. So I got a question. I got three people in the building. One person retires. Now I'm down to two. I got all these new accounts that have happened. What do I do? I'm in the middle of, of implementing an ERP project. And so what I can tell you is this. I personally am three, three people right now. I'm trying to be the CFO. I'm trying to help cover for city administrator. But a lot of my week is spent building our new system. And so I know we're doing great right now. And I'm not saying that some departments, maybe we do have extra staff that isn't as busy as everybody else. But what I would say is it's a really hard message to take back to these departments. But aside from that, it is a hard number to estimate.
And it is, again, that's why I use the analogy of, you know, my two service techs down and my workload has increased. And I'm still able to make it work. I'm, I'm still able to move people around. I'm still able to maybe train somebody within the organization to be able to take that position. So that's, that is where I was going with that. And of course, the CIP thing. And also we have a general fund reserve fund as well, right? Correct?
You have fund balance reserve, which will not be used for ongoing operations. Yes.
Okay.
Of which we've already recommended spending 4.1 million. So let's talk about fund balance reserve just a minute, just a minute.
One thing before you, before you go on, I'm asking, I'm looking at this across the board to see if we can do a collective thing to be able to come up to the number that we wouldn't have to increase taxes. That's why I'm getting that.
So do you want to, then I think take a step back maybe and ask the question. Are you willing to cut services? Are you willing to get rid of amenities? Are you willing to impact current staff? Yes or no? If not, and you wish to cut the tax rate, you can do one-time things. You can do invest Hagerstown. That's definitely a one-time item. You can cut CIPs. What I would say to this group sitting at the table is you're here next year. It's not going to get easier. It's not going to get easier. We make these one-time cuts. If you think that next year this decision goes away, I would love to tell you that it does. But I'm going to be brutally honest. I'm looking at these numbers. I have sat here on Saturdays, running them forwards and backwards. These numbers are not going away. If we do not buy certain equipment and certain vehicles this year, we still have to buy them next year. I go back to the three triples for fire. I only allowed one in the CIP. You, you, those triples are all 2004.
It depends as well on how we increase our tax base in a, in an amount of time as well.
Hopefully.
Yes. Okay.
That's an awful lot. That's, and it's a huge increase to get to there.
So they, they were my, they were the ideas that I had thought about. So, you know.
Mayor, may I ask, may I ask if we could hear from the chiefs that are here at least, what, how many officers do we have? How many pending? How many, like their impact if there was a hiring freeze?
Absolutely.
May I ask?
Chiefs?
Yeah, but yeah, keep in mind though, that that's the one thing that those two departments is the one that I,
He's not going to freeze them, just everybody else. If somebody leaves in police and fire, the mayor is recommending that we not, those positions can all be,
These are considered,
They could be replaced.
He's not, he's not saying,
Oh, that's not what I heard. Okay.
He's looking at to like the other department freezes. That we don't, that are not like the core.
That are the smaller areas. Yes.
I'm, I'm just curious.
But I'm glad you're here.
It's nice to see you both.
I'm just, you know, as I'm looking on our hiring chart online, there's some part-time positions that we're hiring. I'm just curious, some of those non-essential
I would call them,
Positions. How much would that save us?
Like whether the slight department or, So not freezing fire and freezing other open positions that's in the queue right now.
Correct.
Across other departments.
And so my question is that,
The people that are in the positions, but positions that are vacant. Because when you mentioned union, union members, I got,
I'm sorry. So when he's saying his example with his maintenance techs, and maybe if another director would like to come to the table, maybe I'm not explaining it well, or even it's our director, but the way that our union contracts work, they each have a specific job description. So sometimes you can't necessarily train them to do another position unless.
Very nice.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So let me start by just kind of taking us way back. I think there's only one person at the table that was here at the time among the elected body, and that was when the bottom fell out of the, the economy several years ago. Bruce Zimmerman, who was the city administrator at the time, and the mayor and council reduced staff to the point where we were pretty much cut to the bone. Over the course of several years, we've been able to gently bring some of those folks back. But I will tell you that the reduction of staff or the not filling of positions at this point, you may find generates more cost than it does savings. We are already generating a great deal of overtime as a result of vacant positions, which we've not been able to hire for. Part of that is the economy, part of that is our pay scale, part of that is just the nature of the labor market and, and people's desire to have those kinds of jobs. When you talk about moving people from position to position, that works if they're non-union folks. Oftentimes, the positions that you've got within the union environment are very specific and very specifically trained. And, and many of the contracts would really require that you vise somebody into those positions, which means you're going to pay them more than you would otherwise. What will ultimately happen though, is that somewhere along the line, services will not be able to be performed in the positions that they're leaving. It's just the reality of having a very short-staffed labor force. We've chosen not to bulk back up very deliberately. So you're going to have a relatively limited ability to be able to move people around without something being lost or dropping off the table. That's really the reality that we work with every day. We've been pretty efficient here. Probably in some cases to our detriment, because this is where we are now. But that's the reason that you haven't had a tax increase for several years, is because we found ways to do more with less. So when it comes to moving people, it's problematic. There are some areas where you just can't do it because it's against the contract. If you can do it within the contract, it's very difficult because something's going to get left undone. You just don't have enough people to even generate the volume of overtime you would need to fix that problem. That's the best I can go at this point. I'm not sure how much you're going to really save with a hiring freeze. There are positions that you could certainly do that with. But if you look at positions like, you know, some of the senior staff, the engineering positions or those positions, they're very difficult to fill because they're technical positions. A hiring freeze isn't going to help you.
And that's what I'm asking, Donnie. I'm asking to look at ones that we, that we can do without and see how much, you know, there's one area of a department we could,
Well, and we could, we could certainly ask the directors to go through their, their plate of vacancies and say, you know, what can you do without? Of course, they're doing without it now. So a hiring freeze isn't going to save you any money because you're not spending it right now. If people leave, I mean, we certainly have an aging workforce. There's no doubt about it. People will retire during the year, or they'll leave for other reasons. And they'll be able to pick and choose those, but to try to generate an estimation of savings would really be tough.
So to put it in perspective, in the general fund, because I'm assuming you're, you're saying hiring freeze, but are we only doing it in the planning department? Are we only doing it in the neighborhood services department? Are we doing it with the inspectors? Because those are a large part of the general fund outside of police and fire, and it's a group that we've been trying to reorganize and get in a better position with. And so if people leave there, you know, when you have, when you have one inspector who does electrical, one inspector who does plumbing and one inspector, like what do you do?
To that point, I want to share from looking at our, our city website above the job opportunities link. So I want to share what's on here right now, and it's grouped by departments. So accounting, finance, there's open position for administrative coordinator of finance. There's Hagerstown police. I'll skip that since that's not up for discussion right now. Housing and community development, there's a neighborhood services inspector, one position, a neighborhood services program specialist. Under parks, there's parks landscaper and maintenance, parks maintenance worker. Four position, planning and economic development, the assisting zoning administrator, a planner, another planner, public works, public works maintenance worker, another public works maintenance. There's seasonal part-time positions for park, part-time park attendants, seasonal positions for 2025. Utilities division, there's a collection system operator, instrumentation technician, wastewater treatment operator, water instrument, instrumentation technician, water meter super, service person, sorry, and water production superintendent. So that's the list of open opportunities.
In, in, in that, we have seasonal people as well as part-time people. Do we really need that is what I'm asking, and whether we could save in that area.
So, so for the seasonal, for the seasonal staff, really the largest area in the general fund that utilizes seasonal staff is your parks and rick area. I will say that you have grown a number of your parks. It is a goal of this group. We can certainly do without the seasonal. But maybe Eric, can you share what all the seasonal staff across the parks help you do in the summertime?
Yeah. So when I started here in 99, I think there was 14 or 15 parks. We currently have 22 parks and playgrounds and approximately 300 acres of property. A pool, a golf course, two museums, and a host of other amenities to those parks. We currently have 10 full-time staff in the field with those 22 parks and playgrounds, golf course, that sort of, 10. Couple, and that's the field staff. We have a couple of management staff, that sort of thing. So when you have your parks open, basically from spring through the fall, you need staff out there during the week because they're open, you know, every day. So we rely on part-time and seasonals to go out there and make sure people aren't doing the wrong thing, picking up sticks, picking up trash, and that sort of thing. We rely very heavily on the part-time and seasonal staff. And so for the last few years, we have struggled to even find anybody to come work for us for what used to be $12 an hour, $13 an hour, which is now 15. So the minimum we pay is $16 an hour and still struggle to find anybody to come work for us to do relatively unskilled labor. But we have to have those people watch those parks.
Question.
Yep.
With them positions, the seasonal and part-time, like you said, it's not skilled. Are you hiring students?
Sometimes, yes. But, but anybody under the age of 18 can't, can't run certain equipment. And we have two actually high school students that work for us this summer painting curves and that sort of thing. And we have two actually high school students that work for us this summer, painting curves and that sort of thing. So yes, sometimes we do. But again, we, our applicants, a lot of our applicants are, we'll call 30 people and maybe two people will return the phone call.
That's what I suggested. Even if this, the students, if we can hire an abundance of students for that kind of work, that's why I suggested we go through the consortium. Because that's not money that the, we would have to pay them, and it gives them summer job. And if it is just stuff like picking up trash or painting, um, and even if it is a little, a position that's a little more skilled, I'm pretty sure there might be someone on the site that can give them a. Training for, you know, that. And, and it could help because it could teach them an additional skill. I mean, especially since you said you've had a hard time filling them particular positions. If, if they know, I mean, because maybe they don't know at that age, if the city is hiring for it.
We also have to hire people that can be trusted to work on their own, because if they're here in the evenings, there's no supervisor there. We have two supervisors for parks. We have a parks manager, a parks, and a parks supervisor. That's it. And so they'll manage up to 30 people with two people. And so if that's part of it. So you talk about manpower, I can tell you after 26 years, we're doing everything we can with what we got. We used to mow our own right-of-ways because we would hire people, buy our own equipment. It got to the point I couldn't hire enough people. I couldn't find anybody. So now we contracted out. So instead of paying a few guys, 15 or whatever at that time, $10, $12 an hour, now I'm paying $90,000 a year to mow. Because I can't find anybody. So a lot of this stuff is now contracted out. We used to do ore snow operations ourselves, but as the city grows geographically, I don't have enough people to do that. So I have to contract that out. All those things add to our cost.
And that's, that's the same, the same thing I'm saying. We have grown and grown and grown as well, and I can hire two more service techs. I wish I could find them.
Yeah.
Either not there, and either that or I have to see them from another company.
More streets, more parks, more buildings, more, 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 and have less people than it did in 1999.
Correct. Now, I agree, and I wish I could hire two more techs. I have room to hire them, but I can't, but I can't, and I got to continue to do.
And for some of those years, there's no doubt about it, pay was an issue. Some people just will not work for government. They just won't, and it's not for everybody. It, it just doesn't. It's a different animal. It's just a different way of thinking. I came from the private sector. It's been a long time since I worked in the private sector. But pay is absolutely one of the issues. And while the private sector can adjust that pay in a way of adding it to the cost of the product, whether that's a hamburger or HVAC equipment. Ours is through taxes or in fees, or whatever you want to call it. Um, and we've done some of that with some of these things. But believe me, I'm, I'm telling you, after all these years, we are doing everything we can with what we've got. If you want to cut back on some CIPs, yeah, we've done very well in the last number of years with equipment and vehicles, that sort of thing. And I can tell you, public works, there's a number of vehicles if we can do without, we can do without. We have our own garage. We'll fix what we have to fix, and we can save a few dollars here and there. But it's not going to get you where you think you want to be, I don't think. But all you're really doing is deferring the cost. That, that's all you're doing eventually.
It's not going to get you 2.2 million.
It's not going to, 2.2 million.
And that's.
It's also, it also affects projects. For example, let's say I want to go to, um, the state and go for a CPP, um, um, community parks and playgrounds grant. Some of these grants, you have to, you know, it's an 80/20 or 20 or 90/10. Well, if we don't have the 10, what's the point of going after the 90?
It's one of them where you got to spend it to get it type of thing.
Yeah. That's great to have the 90, but you have to have that match. So now I'm starting to wonder, do I pursue any of those? Is it worth doing those?
And for the city parks, Michelle, if you can confirm, um, the budget line item that would cost city taxpayer a dollar and seven cents of the 110, does that include personnel?
Okay, so say that one more time.
The line item for city parks, where it will cost the taxpayer a dollar and seven cents out of the $110, would that, is that for personnel costs, including seasonal?
Yes, that's all parks. That does include seasonal. That includes new contracts that have had, been put into place, right? So that includes tree services. It includes people for contracting all 22 parks. Yes, dollar.
Look at the number.
So full-time staffing has not increased there. Okay, thank you.
So we have, uh, public works, which includes parks and rec. There are seven divisions overall. We have 50 full-time staff. We currently have, as you saw, four, four vacancies, two in parks and two in public works. And we're, we've struggled to fill those, so.
And I, and I, don't get me wrong, I'm not asking you to come up with 2.2 million dollars.
I appreciate that.
What I was asking, what I'm asking is can we look at all across the board at every department of some way to be able to come to be able to add it all together? Whether it's just departments or whether it's CIP and delaying a couple of things, all that together to see if we can get to that number.
And with public works, because it's so large and across such a broad spectrum, other than parking, which is an enterprise fund. Yeah, we probably have other places we can push and give and that sort of thing. But you get to a small department, like say like HR, I mean, there's not much to.
Right.
You know, there's not going to be much. They, they don't do projects and they don't have equipment.
Funding and accounting, it's all staff.
It's all staff. So there's, it's, you know.
And an audit.
And if, if we do look at staffing, I want to remind everyone with the recent storm we had over Easter weekend and how many hours of overtime and staffing that went towards. Recovery efforts, repairs, answering phone calls. I mean, that's something that we weren't expecting, but mother nature happens and sometimes she's pissed. So we have to consider if there's any impact to staffing, what does that look like? And we have a recent example of that.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Yes, if you're, if you're not wishing to impact staffing, current staffing, then I suggest you look at one-time items. If you want to have a conversation about staffing, then I think you tell us the dollar amount you're looking for. Me and I shared a staffing, uh, there is a staffing chart, you know, in the budget.
And, and again, I'm not asking to trim staff. I'm just asking to hire frees, not.
And we, we just came off, we, we did that for years where we had hiring freezes in place for three months. And then what would happen is unless, unless it was a deemed a, a critical position that we had to hire. And now what we're seeing is it takes forever to actually hire and get people in here because of the, of the pay. The pay on the non-union side, which is minimal compared to the increases that we've done on the union side. It's hard to get an engineer. Took me and see years. An engineer is a position you don't want to be without. Your neighborhood inspectors, your permit inspectors. I mean, these, again, they're not police and fire. They're in your general fund. Your construction inspectors and the rest in the engineering group and the people that help with the trash.
Well, how many staff do we have that works for the city of Hagerstown?
How many?
Staff, 400 something.
Don still here? So approved for the entire city is 459. 321 in the general fund in fiscal year 26. Of that 321, the only position that hasn't been approved yet by this group is an additional position in planning. We added it because we heard from the last administration very clearly during, um, one of the last meetings that Kathy Marr and Paul Falk attended with the prior administration. That things needed to change and in order to do it, go hire the position. Again, it's included in this budget. It's in this budget, but it's not approved. We're not hiring until that comes back to the table. That position has to be approved. But again, 321 in the general fund, full-time fiscal year 26, fiscal year 22, 306. The greatest difference is, and I know nobody wants to hear this, and I'm very sorry, it's the addition of full-time staffing we just did in police. So keep that in mind when we look at the 15 people change from four or five years ago. So it's a, it's a hard, I could say I could get you, I don't even want to call out a penny, but we can to round it off.
Want to add a little bit. I, you know, reading through and listening to counsel too, and again, I've been here a long time, so I've seen a lot happen. I was here in 2008 with the financial crisis and we went through. Furlough days and moving people around, and it was a, it was a mess. But we got through it. But there was some talk here about, um, suggesting about, uh, no pay increases for the non-union. I will tell you, I was here in one year where all the unions got pay increases and non-union did not, and I still remember. If you want to discourage your staff, do that. You'll see people walk. There's no reason for that. Everybody in this room here is non-union, but it's not just us. It's not just the directors. It's inspectors, admins, there's a whole group of us that are non-union.
Sargents, lieutenants.
Just go down the line. It's a lot of people.
HPD.
So it's not just me, but I am here to argue for my pay, no doubt about it. I've been through a lot of budgets, and I've been to a lot of places where we had to cut, where we spent, you know, we had meetings week after week in 2008, 2009. Trying to figure out how we were going to navigate that. That wasn't the year, I don't even remember the year now anymore when they did that, but I tell you what, when you give selective groups, not treat all of us the same, that is. That is not the way to do that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to go on record and saying I have no interest in changing the staffing. Um, I said early on in my first term that I was impressed of how the city literally runs itself, but that's made possible by the men and women that we have. Here, working for the city. If that's ever a question, it's, it's a no for me, changing anything staffing level, level, changing wise, that we already have in this budget.
So I know it's not my meeting, it's your meeting. We're coming up, I want to quarter after four. So there's a couple of suggestions that have dollar amounts to them. The best Hagerstown, the suggestion was to reduce 500,000. By give 359,000, I'll be honest, I'd rather give you a penny somewhere else than to say that I'm going to freeze positions and do it only when a handful of positions. Again, then we're hand, we're, we're segregating different areas and saying one department in one position is more important. Do you? Want to keep having conversations? Is there other items for discussion? Do you just want us to go, I mean. Are we saying collectively, the majority, you wish to take 2.2 million dollars out? Is that the goal? Are we trying to get to one, are we trying to get to the current tax rate? That will help.
Again, one of the suggestions that I made, I'll bring it back up again, is going forward with the, the current proposed increase. If we are able to put a cap on it for FY 30 or FY 28. Michelle, what has that been done before? And what does that, what does that look like? Like, would that happen, something that we would like put in the, in a introduction of some sort of saying like, this is the tax rate for. FY 26 cap at FY 20, I'm trying to understand the process and, and the verbiage of what that would mean.
So we would have to probably take a look because the ordinance is very specific and the motion is very specific, our char- charter is very specific. We can only set and establish tax rates for a single fiscal year at a time. Separately within the budget motion, can we attempt to freeze the tax rate? You absolutely can. Caution you maybe that the year to do that would necessarily be in year three when we're getting ready for new rates. It would be in year one, when you know what the assessed values look like. We've had back-to-back years, six years in a row, massive drops in the assessed value. So if there's a massive drop, what that might look like and be is an impact could be very significant. But I'm sure that if that's what you wish, we could find a way somewhere in the language. Just wouldn't necessarily be in the ordinance itself for the tax rate. We couldn't do that, but you could put language somewhere.
And, and again, for the record, just so everyone does know, I do pay $2,340 in taxes to the city of Hagerstown, and I do pay $2,639 to the county. So I would be affected by that five, that 5.5 cent increase, but I do understand the responsibility at what it, it's going to come to. And that's the only reason why I'm proposing that increase with, along with the cap. Just so that's clear.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm curious to, um, so I kept reading over this page about the permits. Can you help me understand that? Just the part where it says, um, we're projected to be over budget. So is that page?
Are you looking at revenue?
Yeah, um, section two, page nine.
Okay, so we're looking at general fund revenue on the permit and licensing side?
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, ask your question again.
Um, so I guess I just need a little clarity of what that entails and what that looks like. Um, this, this increase is due to a multiple permit and licensing resi- revenue categories being over budget. That, does that mean we're not where we're supposed to be with the permits or we?
So in, in this instance, we're looking at the general fund section two, page nine. We're looking at licensing and permit revenue. We're looking at actual fiscal year 25 compared to budget fiscal year 25, and that is a good story, right? The good story there is we're anticipating ending the year at 2.6 million, when before we thought we'd only be at 2.4. Licenses and permits are, can be very developer-driven. And so the timing of when some of these larger warehouse permits hit are unexpected. So what we're seeing actually happen in fiscal year 25 is great, right? But you don't know that until it happens, March.
Yeah, so.
The year's almost gone.
I mean, that's the one thing when we are putting the budget together in, in engineering and permits, and you're trying to basically make your best guess at what's going to happen, um, in the coming year. So sometimes we have an inkling of a big warehouse project that might be coming. And so we will estimate, you know, based on that knowledge, that we will, we'll say we think we're going to generate this much revenue. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it, it's delayed. So it's, it's difficult to accurately project what your revenue is going to be in any given year. As Michelle said, especially on our permits, um, you know, if it's a big project, you're going to see a lot of money coming in in permit fees. But if those large projects are not happening, it's a much lower sort of baseline that you're going to have.
I guess I was just curious to where, and so I also wanted to say this. Um, just be mindful, since we are sitting at a table, very new people, looking at something like this can be like, wow, you know what I mean? Like especially being a business owner, I don't look at these type of numbers. So just trying to understand, so I'm just trying to understand it. So with this section, um, are we able, I don't know how, I can't remember how much the permits cost. Are we able to even capitalize more off someone coming to buy the permits? And I know that sounds crazy to a business owner. But you know, I'm just trying to understand where we can, where is a good idea to raise or not to. So would that even be an option, especially with bigger developers that come in, you know, are we, can we do something like that? I'm just trying to understand, so.
Sure. Well, a lot of our permit fees are based on the value of the construction that's going on. So that's going to vary depending on the project. So a, a large warehouse that is very complex systems in it and other things, that's going to generate more permit revenue than someone rehabbing a, a convenience store.
So the bigger projects, could we, is it possible, of, of course, you don't want a small business owner to pay these big permit fees, but the bigger projects, are we able to do something like that?
And some of them are on the, like you said, like, so like on the building permit side. So if your project is 50,000 versus your project being estimated at 2 million, you're paying more because the value of your project. It looks at the, how much the value of your rehab is going to be when that permits. And so a lot of times with the permits and the licensing, they're one-time type of things. If you look in the middle of that page however, you see things like residential rental licensing and you see 700,000, 725,000. That's an item that happens through our neighborhood services and not necessarily through our permit inspection side with Jim, but, um, that happens more on our routine annual basis. That billing happens actually in the month of May, so a lot of people probably just receive those. And then, uh, vacant structures is almost halfway, no, more than halfway, almost. And then vacant structures is almost halfway, no, more than halfway, almost at the bottom of the page. So there's a couple of items in here that aren't a one time thing. And then, uh, for instance, there's a handful of other ones that are every other year. So this, I will say the licensing and the permits, the last couple of years, we've been very fortunate because we've had a lot of large building, not just warehouse building, but just the type of, yes.
So it depends on what they're doing, what they're developing, depends on how much.
Yes.
Can we raise that? Is that a, like, is that an option to?
To raise it more?
I mean, cause I don't really know exactly how much it's on for Ruffle any feathers, but I'm just, I, like I said, I was really trying to comb over it and understand.
Sure. So. So I think it's a balance because um, we certainly would enjoy more revenue coming in. But at the same time, that, that tends to play against what Jill and her group are trying to do with economic development. Because they're trying to present the city as a welcoming place, you know, we're open for business and this sort of thing. And I, we try to keep our permit and license fees pretty much in line with the surrounding municipalities. Um, but that would certainly be something that we could look at if we wanted to, to increase fees and, and license requirements.
We just have to be mindful, if some of those fees are ordinances, we'd have to come back, they're gonna take time, right? Um, some of them might not be, but looking at the individual fees there and the fee structure, we can bring back.
Where, yeah, where are you, where are you looking at?
Oh, so I'm clearing the backs. So in section eight is the schedule of our user fees, right? And so we have them segregated by departments and areas. And there is a, so just like everything, you know, the budget, it's a balance, right? Your revenues must equal your expenses. It's, it's a balance. You add more on the expense side, you either decrease somewhere else on the expense side, or you add on the revenue to rebalance. Permit fees, again, are one of those things where it's a balance. You want to be welcoming and be able to draw and encourage development, but at the same time, be able to recoup enough that it helps with our services, right? And so again, it's a balancing act. Jill?
And I just wanted to say, I agree with what Jim said. I would also say in the last five years, we've seen a significant amount of that development happen on large parcels of land, specifically that is zoned industrial in the, in the corporate boundaries of the city. There is only one remaining industrial parcel of significant acreage. So we won't see that large development happen at the scale that it's happened for the last five years. Um, and that's just something to take into consideration. And uh, that the, what is reflected certainly in the last year is a result of some of those large tracts of lands being, being purchased and developed, especially in the industrial category. Residential development, um, I still see as a significant area of available land that is either uh being prospected or is um at some phase of uh development that uh we will see that development activity happen.
And there's also um some large parcels that are eligible for annexation. So they may, if they come into the city, you may see larger developments on, on land that's not currently in the city.
And I would say, um, you know, certainly with the reorganization and the synergies between economic development and planning, that um we need a strong planning team in order to handle annexations, handle zoning administration and um development activity, including the uh review process of development plans and site plan approvals. It's gonna be critical to our operation going forward.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Jim.
I have something. If, if we can go back to while we're here, um, in, in the tax rate discussion. So the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, Sbat, establishes the constant constant
The constant.
Yield tax rate. So for FY 26, that rate has increased.
Yeah, so they are suggesting, the, they are suggesting that our rate go down because the value of our properties went up in year three. So what happens in our triennial assessment period? They assess like, so they'll be, they'll be starting in December for our next fiscal year. So fiscal year 26 will be year one. That's the year of the greatest changes. We have phases built in. So it's possible that, you know, a residential owner got a tax, got the increase in your fuel last time. And instead of uh implementing all of that tax rate in year one, it's phased over three consecutive years. But because the values are higher because of that phase in, then they're saying you need to lower the tax rate in order to have the same dollar.
And that assessment is done by the state of, of, of the value?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes, that is done independently.
So our proposed tax rate will help cover that, that difference between the property assessments to cover the increase in healthcare, increase in staffing uh for police, uh et cetera, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, for those items that were increasing. Yep, thanks, Miss.
Anyone else?
So what I need, what I need, what I, before we leave the table, right? And then we're gonna have, we're gonna have some more special guests. So thank you very much for enabling everybody to come forward. I just wanna make sure that before we leave the table, I need clear direction on what ordinance I'm bringing back. Like, what is your tax rate? And we can discuss during the budget review session what those cuts look like. Pick and choose the menu or no menu?
Well, that's, I mean, the ideas that were brought to you, um, do you take a look at those and maybe you can reduce the tax or reduce the five and a half cents? Can you?
That, that's what I'm saying. If, if collectively, the majority wants to take 500,000 from Invest Hagerstown, yes.
Oh, I got you.
I'll take that 2.2 million. So again, if you give me nothing but 359,000 dollars in reductions, I'm gonna tell you that's a penny. So instead of five and a half cents, that's four and a half cents.
But I would like, I would, if I may, for each of the items that was presented as a, as a cut, if we could go line by line and get a consensus on that.
So I know what I'm doing.
If you have a three or not.
Yes.
Yes. That's what I was thinking too.
Okay. That's, that's just for transparent for me.
Yes, please. Chiefs?
So we just wanted to uh come forward because unfortunately or fortunately, we've been excluded from the discussion of the potential cuts because of our, our business that we run. And we, we appreciate that. But at the same time, we'd be remiss in saying that we should not be bearing all the weight of the cuts on everyone of the department. So if there's anything that we could do, we will, we are willing to do on our end. Budgets are tight. I can tell you and John have both talked, you know, we've, we've presented our budgets. You, I know our, my budget with that controlled outside of the CIP was uh four and a half percent from last year. So inflationary costs covers a lot of that. Most of that was in tech and, and licensing and software stuff. But at the same time, you know, I feel guilty that the other department heads are being looked at to find cuts and we've been excluded. And I'm just making that offer to this body that uh on my end, I will do my part to make sure to meet whatever goals you guys decide, um, without putting that burden on every one of my fellow compatriots behind me, because I, I just don't think that's fair to them. Some of the cuts that could happen will impact what we do too, you know, anyway. So uh, give, to give an example, and this is one, if you, I know you're not talking about doing this, but if you shut down the pool, you know, there's activity for all those, those young people that go to the pool that they're gonna find something else to do over the summer. Some of it's not gonna be productive. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention from my perspective, is that um, we're in solidarity with our work compatriots behind us and we are willing to make our sacrifices if we need to as well.
And that's, and that's my, my thing. I think we're, if we don't at least look at it, I think we're doing the citizens a disservice um by just throwing out five and a half cents. If we don't look at it, I just, I, I don't know. I don't know, you know, I don't think that goes over very well.
We, and we appreciate the, looking at the critical nature of the work, the, the fire and law enforcement, uh, 24/7 service. And we truly run near bare bones, but to be in with the team, we understand that, you know, we, we have to make sacrifices if we need to. And uh, we still wanna have the team standing out the way from us. We're part of them.
As, as Michelle said earlier, it's one city, we're one city. This, you know, departments are departments, but we're one city. So if those decisions you guys need to make are tough decisions, need to be made, we're, we're part of that as well. We appreciate your part.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Mayor, if I may.
Go for it.
Amanda? If she could come up to speak to the Invest Hagerstown, we didn't hear from her, as the Councilman Flaherty's suggestion of a $500,000 cut to Invest Hagerstown in some capacity, or, okay.
Both of you, yes. I think they're gonna share that responsibility and kind of as, as we.
If you could, if you could speak to um the Invest Hagerstown program and, and uh the proposal for 500,000, like that. How would that impact? Not to put you on the spot, but I'm glad you're here.
And um, as Michelle went through um page 12 on section four, the million eighty covers five programs of which homeownership is one of them. And we've had um great success with the homeownership program that was reported in the April 15th meeting. I think that if, if 500 were to be cut from the um million eighty, I would probably, um, I'd seek your input as we do every year in June as to which buckets to use for the remaining balance. It, it is possible that it would be sliced across each of the five programs. It could also um be like the elimination of the larger grants at 250,000. In, in April, um, we did uh give you an update that we have as a result of forfeitures. We do have a fund balance in that account. I believe um we could weather a year with a $500,000 cut because we're sitting on a fund balance due to some projects that had forfeited their dollars. However, I would advocate for um making sure that a, a cut is not perpetual. Um, back in 2019, when the program was created, there was a tax increase of um, correct me if I'm wrong, but three cents on the tax rate in order to create the program. So in, in some ways, you can view that that three cents increase at that point in time was designated to try to drive continued investment. In the budget um report on page 10, we also sho- show some of our metrics of what our performance in using that money is. And there's a, a 10 times multiplier for the money that has been used between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 24. The total um on page 10 of that money is approximately 4.8 million over those six years. The investment created from leveraging the city's dollars of 4.8 million is 48.2 million dollars of new investment into the city of Hagerstown. Um, and, and countless homeowners in here as well. So 111 new homeowners. So when you, when you give us money to use, we, we feel a great responsibility to um improve upon the city taxpayer dollars with a return on investment to the city taxpayer dollars with a growth of the assessable base. Um, I, I say in some public presentations, if our department wore a badge, it would be um the badge of protecting the assessable base of the city. Because economic development is about growing investment and uh growing the assessable base of the city.
Um, on the homeowner's side, I mean, we're up to date um to 60 new homeowners in the fiscal year. So I heard on Tuesday night, a lot of people saying hindering with a tax increase. They're coming in at a rapid rate. It could. Right now, we can't keep the money in the account. Realtors can't keep homes on in the market fast enough. They can't build them fast enough. They are coming. I understand, I'm a, I'm a homeowner here. I, I don't wanna see a tax increase either, but we definitely are going through homeownership funds at a rapid rate. And like I said in our presentation, that is an abnormal. We normally do not have those funds or the repayment that we have been getting to be able to give 60 new homeowners in the city. It's usually 23 to 24 out of the current budget of what we're doing. So that would be drastically cut.
I just wanna.
And I mean, here to say, we can weather a year if you need, if you need to cut.
Jill, for the record, I don't like the sound of that. Weathering it for a year, I think that's the message I'm trying to get across over and over again. Um, not to you, not to you, but just in general, um, cutting back, you know, deferring the issues for just one year to just come back to the table again next year to be in a deeper hole and bring this all back again, is what I'm trying to avoid. So thank you both for coming out and speaking on how valuable and impactful.
I just also wanna say, um, I, I think it's a really uh important program because these are, this is one of the first ways to build generational, well, it's homeownership. You know, and I mean, that, that's amazing that people are coming, that you can't keep the funding in the account long enough.
It would have been gone in October on our original budget.
Home ownership, it's the first way. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just need to go around the table. Are we looking to cut amenities? Are we looking to uh, for a year, close the, the Potterfield Pool and the golf course? So I got a three vote.
So can we, can we go from the top?
Oh, sure.
List of order?
Still.
Before you say that.
Okay.
How, like, I agree with, I agree with the chief. If the pool is closed, what are they gonna do?
We're just making sure we, we heard your suggestion. We wanna make sure that all of them is out here, right? But I agree with, I agree with Councilmember Burnett, head it from the top.
Either just one of us, but you know, I think that's, but please let me know if I missed one. Let's start with um Councilman Flaherty's Invest Hagerstown proposal with a $500,000 cut.
No.
Oh, wait. Wait, wait. Yes or no?
I'm sorry, Councilman, um, I'll share our step down.
Okay.
I wanna make sure.
Well, wait a minute, are we doing, are you going down the line and we're supposed to say yes or no?
Yes.
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 Okay. Um, okay.
Remember, gonna go down each of the lines, propose for cuts and say yes or no. Okay. All right. First up, Invest Hagerstown, uh, proposed by Councilman Flaherty to $500,000 cut.
No.
Yes.
No.
Is that to offset the $375,000 we're losing?
That's a question for this body.
Wasn't included in the budget we have? Or is that in addition to the 375,000?
That would be in addition.
We're not talking about five and a half cents, we're talking about six and a half cents first. Right? Right?
We should, but if, but if you say, Michelle, within the budget, the 375, find a way within your contingencies and other areas to absorb 375, I'm gonna make it work. If we wish to not hit the, uh, since we can't get to five and a half and we're trying to decrease it, but that is an excellent question because we do have 375 in revenue that I'm not gonna have.
When you say find it in contingencies, part of what I hear you saying is we're gonna find it, the ability at this table among this body to hold fast against other union groups that are gonna come in and ask for above what we have budgeted for the pay raises, uh, including public tape. Right?
Could be, yes. Or help us find a way with health insurance, or help us find a way with some other things. Or maybe Jim will find another big builder and Jill will help get somebody in that will be our saving grace, right? If you tell me that I have to absorb $375,000 in the overall budget and I'm just gonna make it work, I will tell you, I will, I will commit to finding that way. But that is gonna be, I, I can't do that plus the penny for the hiring freezes. Like, we will find a way within it overall to make it work. But then that means all of the rest, there is, there is, there is no, you know, when the department say, hey, Michelle, this project's over budget, I need, and I'm gonna be like, no, I don't have it. I'm saying I'm sweeping it from everywhere. I'm saying I'm sweeping it from everywhere.
Okay, so we have a no, a yes, and a what, what do you?
I'm good with the reduction of $375,000 to offset the loss in revenue we projected to receive.
Okay.
About that?
He's starting from six and a halves and it's not five and a halves.
That's what we're really at.
Okay.
Yes and no? No, I'm just kidding. Um. No.
All right, what's the next item?
Councilwoman Anderson's, uh, FY 28, FY 30 cap, if, and keep the five and a half cents. And I think that if we vote on that item, pretty much everything else is, or we still wanna keep going.
You can't set the tax rates beyond.
In, in the act, in, in the actual body of the ordinance, you can't. It has to be July 1st, June 30th. So within your motion for the budget, we could look at, and again, I don't wanna say this off the cuff and definitely run it by, um, our legal too. But we could somewhere in the body, maybe in front of the motion for the budget, put a disclaimer. But I'm gonna say, it's gonna be, that could be very hard depending upon what happens in the market.
But should we come back to that after we go through the rest of the list of other proposed cuts? Come back to your suggestion?
Cause I'm gonna say. Cause I'm a no on any cut.
Okay.
No cuts.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to. I'm okay with the cut as long as we're not cutting it completely. As long as like Jill said, they, they can hold off for a second. There's still money in there. They still have something to work with. As long as it's not completely gone. I want them to be able to still be able to support that program and still, and still be able to help with investing homeownership.
Okay, so for the $500,000 cut in an effort to reduce the five and a half cent tax rate, I have heard two yeses and two no's. Separately with Invest Hagerstown, I have heard a single vote to reduce our property tax revenue, 375,000. Not because we're looking to reduce the rate, but because that's the dollar associated with taxes that were in the budget to begin with. And offsetting the 375 to Invest Hagerstown for that. But not the 500 to reduce the five and a half cents. Is that an accurate statement?
Say that again. I know that was a lie, but.
I know, I'm sorry. I mean, I need y'all to say. I have, so to reducing Invest Hagerstown, $500,000 for the, that's gonna reduce the five and a half cent tax rate increase. I've heard two, two yes, no, two no's and two yeses now, right? Separately, separately, I've heard from Councilmember Alshire a reduction of 375,000 because our property revenue is too much in the budget book because we're losing one of our tax base customers.
So explain, Christian, can you explain that? So you're not saying that you want to reduce this 500,000? You wanna reduce. I'm just wanna make sure I understand.
I'm thinking of 375. No matter what you guys do here, you gotta find another 375.
Okay.
No matter what you do here, you, you're not at five and a half right now. You're at six and a half.
So it just went up. Let's see what I.
So you want a reduction at the 375, not the 500?
Right. Which takes you from 6.5 to 5.
I actually like that because I feel like the more that we can, I feel more comfortable. Leaving as much as possible in it for them to continue the program. So yeah, so now we got.
So now we're at 375 instead of 500, so we're.
And again, the 375 doesn't impact the five and a half. It's the action.
Michelle, repeat that one more time.
Repeated for Erica.
So initially, initially, our budget rate, our proposed budget rate is at five and a half cent tax in, in here. And that consists 2.2 million. However, as Councilmember Alshire is pointing out, three meetings ago, we left the table. The stadium is included in my dollars. And so the tax book for them for the year was gonna be roughly 375,000. So to remove that rev, he's saying we need to remove and cover that revenue somewhere else in the budget this table before you even touch the five and a half cent tax. Because to him, the 375 means instead of doing five and a half, it's another penny.
Right.
And he doesn't wanna go another penny, right? He, he's trying to find a way to cover.
That's your, that difference is that penny. The more and more we sit at this table, the more we understand this budget. I'm staying with, I'm staying with that.
So two to 375 reduction in order. And again, it's not gonna get us lasting where we're starting at the five and a half.
But we still got a whole list to go through, so. My kid. And the 375 is coming out where? See, repeated for, repeated for Erica.
So we're decreasing property tax, we're decreasing property tax revenue because they are assessed value, our base, not the rate, the base is changing. Cause we have a tax exempt entity to subtract out.
So that penny's kinda just hanging out.
Okay.
Where are we at on that?
Can we come back?
So what's the ask then? For that item?
I, so we're either no, either 500 or 375. Carolina's a no. She's not cutting. Look, excuse me. Anytime we list something about cuts, she's gonna say, like, her, her stance on it is no.
She's, she's comfortable with a five and a half cent tax rate. Not comfortable, that is the incorrect word. She is compromised. She has compromised at the five and a half cent tax rate because she doesn't wish to see us cut anything else that impacts any type of what we're providing in the goals in which we've.
I feel like it's like a responsible decision just overall. That's how I'm looking at it.
So the 500 for Invest's cut, there was two no's, two yeses. No?
It was one 500.
One yes, two no's.
Yeah, so basically, 375, the Chris is proposing, or Councilman Alshire is proposing, is just gonna keep us at five and a half cents.
Right.
Gotcha. Alright.
So he's based now on six and a half cents because that's what we were gonna get from them. You got it?
So 375 is now the ask.
Right, and that would give you five and a half cents.
Okay. Can we vote on that?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So yes or no?
Yes.
For 375. So that's three on the 375. Councilmember Flaherty?
375, no.
Towards the reduction in revenue, not towards the reduction in the tax. Right?
Yeah, I would say yes, sorry. Yeah.
Alright, so that's coming from Invest Hagerdow, Hagerstown, and that's 375. Now.
Okay.
Do we, do we wish? Councilmember Flaherty, do you wish to revisit Invest Hagerstown? Minus the, like, for the $125,000 difference? Get a whole penny reduction and get us to 2.2 million, but you originally said 500, so that's still another 125,000, do you wish? Okay, so cutting another 125,000 from Invest Hagerstown, which again would be in total 500. No's and yeses?
No.
No. I'm not cutting like that. Okay.
That's a no.
Okay, so Invest Hagerstown cut is at 375.
All right, what's next?
Pool, uh, pool closure.
No.
Well, we already know Caroline. She's.
I'm a no.
I'm a yes.
We're talking about closing the pool?
Yes.
No.
You know I'm a no.
Next.
Golf, closing the golf. Aminity.
Okay, golf course. Got it.
He already said yes.
So one yes.
No.
So we're talking about closing the golf course for the year?
Yes.
For the upcoming year?
Sure.
No, no.
No, only because I feel like we're still, like, it's still, it's not going anywhere.
Alright, hiring freezes, not including police fire.
Yes.
No.
No.
Which positions?
I don't know.
I mean, no one has said that.
Any other than.
I talked to Steve Bockmiller a week ago, and he got one guy running the entire planning department at the moment, generally because everybody is vacating, right? For, for various reasons. I'm just curious, is he going to be the planning director, the planner, and the zoning administrator for some unforeseeable additional amount of time? So which positions are we talking about?
I thought it was.
I was saying, yeah, part-time and seasonal.
Yeah, part-time.
Hiring freeze for only part-time and seasonal? Okay, does that make a difference in either of your votes?
No, I'm still no. I'm still no.
Councilmember Alshire, hiring freeze for part-time and seasonal positions.
Part-time and seasonal for our parks?
Oh, part-time and seasonal.
No.
I guess, I'm like, we already got you three. Um, but if we can get food and workers to help with this.
So hiring freeze for time and seasonals would be yes?
If we can get the consortium to possibly step in and help with seasonal for the summer.
So that's two yeses and three no's?
I'm only.
So on that comment, I'm still a no, but I'm a yes too. I think we should be doing that regardless.
Right.
Does that make sense?
That's what I've.
I'm a no on cutting anything, but that's a good point. If we're having a struggle during our seasonal periods and we have the Western Maryland Consortium that outsources the youth for specific jobs.
Right.
I'm open to it.
Seasonal, we can get, seize the youth. And be mindful, the consortium isn't just like high school. I think they go up to like 20 years old, 20 something years old.
21, I think.
So we can get these young people to come in and step in and we kinda announce it. Like, hey, we have these positions that'll be available, seasonal only, a part-time only, however it's worded. Because this will free up, like, we will, I mean, it's the consortium, so it's, and they, and I, um, kinda men, I mentioned it to them, and she's like, we would love to partner with the city.
So we'll have, we're looking to what's available.
So I'm depending on what we do, that's depending on my answer.
Yeah, we, I think, I think we can do that.
We gotta, we gotta make a decision.
Yeah.
Yes or no?
I can't make a decision until I know we are partnering with the consortium.
Or timeline.
I don't think that that's a, that's not like an absolute kind of thing. I think we can still have that conversation.
Me too.
Regardless, like regardless of this budget topic.
Okay, because we are, we are on the record.
And if we just propose, but if the numbers come down in actual.
Okay.
With the government help, even better.
You got it.
Yeah.
I'm a yes.
Okay.
With the.
So I have two. Okay, so I've heard two yeses.
Two yeses, three no's.
Well, I mean, but, cause there's, yeah, so like, either way, so you already got you.
Got three no's.
You know where I stand with it.
Alright, and I, I'm very apologetic because I get very passionate and you might not have noticed that about me yet, Mr. Marana.
Oh, I do too.
I'm very sorry.
Absolutely.
So he mentioned fund balance reserves, and I have like immediately jumped all over that. But the table and the body has to speak about fund balance reserves. What I will say to you is fiscally, our bond rating counts on us being responsible. And to use it for routine, ongoing, recurring expenses is a massive no-no. So, fund balance reserves.
So with that being said, I'm not totally sure what that even is.
Okay. So I think.
Is it funding that's put up for like a rainy day type of thing, or like, what is it? I don't, I don't really.
So we have a fund balance reserve in a general.
The money that you keep in your savings accounts when you go to the bank to get a loan, you get a really nice interest rate. You got no money in the bank, they don't give you a really good interest rate.
Okay.
You don't get a good interest rate, you pay higher interest. So if you don't keep that money in the bank, all you're gonna do is pay more out when you go to get that loan because your interest rate's gonna be higher and your payment's gonna be higher.
So our.
That's why you don't like to touch it, and that's kinda like what you're saying, like.
It has to be healthy.
It's sitting in there to accrue whatever it's supposed to do, and you don't like to touch it.
One-time items, so that's why we're utilizing it in some of the CIPs that we've been, we're recommending utilizing 4.1.
Hence the word reserve.
Look at it like a.
You, you touch it, but you do that um, in a manner that you keep a good healthy amount in the savings, and when it does build up, you're like, oh, I got some extra in there built up, had a good year. I'm gonna go do this stuff that I can use for that instead of using my cash coming up.
Of you in like a credit card. Would we take all that credit card money just to fix, like, a certain department to get out of the debt? No. Right. We wouldn't wanna do that, so.
Keep in, keep in mind, this is not saying drain account.
Right.
Right.
Right, it's like, we're trying to find cuts at every avenue to try and reduce this thing. That's what we're.
And so we have unfunded liabilities for both pensions and OPEB. And OPEB is just retiree insurances, right, of about 67 million. So if something, if something catastrophic happened and you had to cease operations for a day, a week, a month, however long, we need that fund balance to make sure that our current retirees continue to get paid. And it is at 67 million actuarially determined at the end of last year.
Now, Michelle, like I mentioned earlier about the, the storm, the Easter storm and the overtime and the costs that was generated from responding to that. Would those costs, could that, to pay for that, could that come out of the fund and balance for something in that case?
So what I would say, and it's something that I've said to several of the departments, is if, if you go over budget and we end the year and you are over budget and we end up with a loss, it's gonna use up that fund balance reserve. It's gonna use, anytime you have a loss, it, it decreases that. And so what we've said is wait till we get to the end of the year, and if you have those losses, it's going to utilize it. But instead of, but that's different than saying we're comfortable using it for other areas. And I think, you know, in fairness to the mayor, he's saying, Michelle, you only use 4.1 million in capital. Why don't you use your fund balance for more in capital? My concern, my only caveat is I also do not like to use it if it's just a routine vehicle that we're gonna do over and over and over. But I want you, that is a suggestion and it was thrown out and you need to vote.
Correct.
No.
Yes.
Councilmember Alshire, would you like to use more fund balance reserves?
And to make the $9.4 million hole in next year's budget bigger? No.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna go with a no as well because how y'all explain it is.
Next one?
That's all I have.
I only have the other one that said, that said, Councilmember Burnett said, no interest in touching staff, so.
Uh, no interest in touching.
I don't wanna. So at 125, if I come back with that reduction, that is a point three on the, on the. So not even, it, it's a, not even, it's three tenths of a penny. So instead of five and a half cent, we'd be doing 5.2 cents.
I have a couple more.
I'm sorry, I said. I'm sorry, say that again.
You brought it down.
No, I have a couple.
Oh, no, 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 actually, I'm wrong. We said no to the 125, so Yes, please.
Well, I'm gonna reiterate the items that I brought up the last several budget sessions. We could close the ice rink. Anybody have an interest in doing that?
I would, didn't you say it was gonna be expensive to replace, place it? How much was that gonna be? Because the whole system's 25 years old.
Eric, you wanna say it again?
So last year, we got priced to, because the equipment's coming to an end. We hear that, and we, that's a fair amount of money in making repairs, and that sort of thing, I've brought this to council, and some of you are aware of this. The, the estimate that Kelly HVAC out of Frederick Tors doing a lot of work over there was 2.7 billion, 2.7, some change, 114,000, whatever it was. But, um, that doesn't include, and that's a budget number. So it could be a little more, it could be a little less, we'll probably have to have some engineering fees for somebody actually, because you're actually just not replacing equipment, you're designing a whole new system. So you figure 5 to 10% of the construction cost, and let's face it, here at $3 million. And that's just for those making money.
Right.
So if you want to stay nice, ring business, you might as well plan for 3 million minimum, and then all the other costs. No, we did replace all the HVAC equipment recently, about two years ago, that was about 94,000, um, so
So
You got other questions?
No, unless they have a question for you.
Wait a minute, um
Sure.
Can you just say that one more time? If we, sorry, I'm really sorry.
That's okay, it's all right.
Um, if
So the equipment is, is aging out.
Right.
Right, and at some point, we have to decide, as an organization, if we're gonna stay in the ice rink business, because the building is designed for one specific use, to be an ice rink. Period. So if we want to stay in that business, at some point in the near future, and we push it out to FY '27.
I know, I did.
She's a little chilly.
Sorry, I'm sitting here.
We're, we're talking, we're talking, investing $3 million.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Fund balance reserves.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
So does anybody want to close the ice rink for the next year?
Yeah.
I do.
No.
I said no.
Um I'm okay with it.
Yeah, so is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Okay, two yes, two no?
I'm a no.
Kristen, a no.
Train museum. Save yourself about 80,000 bucks. We're gonna close the train museum.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the dollar figure?
Train museum.
No, the dollar figure.
I have about 80,000 bucks.
Okay.
No.
Don't know. I just, I, I want, I've got all these in the list. Sort of talked about them. Uh, Hager House. We could close that, and we could save on the capital investment that we have programmed.
A lot of, and, and some of that is grant funded. So here comes, here comes Eric.
I'll just stay on that.
You're untargeted here.
Oh, no, trust me, he's gonna probably move on.
I know, I understand the process. The Hager House, we, we actually received a $100,000 grant to help with the funding of renovating the museum. The museum opened in, uh, there's, there's two buildings there, primarily. The original Hager House, Jonathan Hager constructed and lived in, which you can tour, and then a separate building, which is a modern building, built in the early 60s, and they opened, it's a visitor center and a museum. The museum opened, I think, in 1967, so it has been renovated in 50 years, basically, and so we're yeah, we got this grant, which took about five years to get the grant and get this all planned out, and so we're just about ready to move on construction. So, if we cut it now, we have to return the money and do that whole process.
Go ahead and vote.
No.
Something with two no, no? Five nos?
Five nos?
Yeah.
That's the first one.
To, to address our obligations as it applies to our debt service increase, we could adjust parking deck rates.
No.
Just point out the things that, that are changing our budget.
We'll be talking about parking next week.
Leave that.
How much is that?
What we got?
650,000.
You got any more?
Is that a no, no, nobody wants to raise parking rates?
No.
No raise to parking rates.
No raise.
No raise to parking.
We could, uh, through some steps, we could pass employee premium costs onto employees in healthcare cost changes.
Yes.
No.
Four nos. Next.
We could, uh, reduce the CIP, which is at 15 right now. Um, the largest items of which will obviously be to fire uh, for the, um, engine that's scheduled to be replaced.
No. Prices on that machine will go up by next year?
No.
Yeah, tariffs, no federal. No.
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 Uh, we could revisit the contract, right, with a federal lobbyist?
Yes.
Correct, and that's about 70,000. Which is the actual difference in the legal
His current contract is, 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 uh, 70,000 right now. How did that differ from last year? What was it last year?
We, we, this was
This would be our first year.
Federal lobbyist was brand new, based upon requests prior, uh, prior mayor and council requests to get a federal lobbyist.
And how important would you guys say that he is to the body, to the council? I guess you should think about this when you're thinking about
First, like, this administration
Yeah, this was a, um, a ask or request from the previous administration. Um, it was highly favored, of course, last administration. I will say that the federal lobbyist has been, uh, will be instrumental in, in obviously looking at the federal actions. Um, and more recently, with the nonprofit scare that we had um, some time ago, about, you know, what that looks like, um, federal lobbyist was able to provide us information on, on what's happening. So that would be just another tool that we could have someone representing us specifically for the city when it comes to what's happening at the White House.
So that's a no for me.
To
A no to what? To remove No to remove lobbyist contract.
It's a no for me.
Mary, what'd you say?
I said I didn't support removing that contract.
Yes.
I wasn't supportive of that in the last
So you're, yes, okay. Ask me now, Sharon, what do you want to know?
Yes.
You're a yes. So there's two yeses, three nos?
Oh, there was a third no, I'm so sorry. Did you say?
Oh, I didn't say anything.
Oh, I could should.
I was gonna say, I missed it.
No, um
Okay.
Because I, so let me just, let me just ask this, um
We have separate state offices, which we have for now.
So we always have a state lobbyist, but this is our first term having a federal lobbyist. And they only have to work within what they're supposed to do? Like, I mean, state only has a state, federal
Correct. State office goes after state dollars, and federal office goes after
So you never had a lobbyist that works both?
Usually they don't, state and Then you have lobbyists to do it too.
Um, it, um, and I'll just ask, uh, Councilmember Oshair and Burnett, um, do you feel like it's beneficial to have it? I mean, because y'all's administration, last administration wanted to have this.
I, I do for this, for this first, uh, year, uh, with the current White House administration.
Um, and that is like a set rate, like that is what they asked for, or is that
It's a contract, yes.
Oh, that's the contract.
They're ignoring it.
And it was the, so
Yes.
That's your debts.
But we backed that down to a one-year agreement. Um, I'm fairly certain we backed that down to a one-year agreement so that the body could so the body could revisit the pros and the cons of what we gave versus what we pay.
What's your vote?
No.
That's three nos.
I'm freezing.
Next.
Okay. Uh, we could revisit the increases in the community engagement. I believe we moved that person from half to full-time, correct?
Say that one more time.
That's correct.
Community engagement.
Community engagement, believe me.
Yes, so that person is no longer ARPA funded, so yes.
I'm, I'm just asking if folks want to cut that.
Yeah, I was.
No.
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 I'm a no.
Okay, four nos.
We could reduce, uh, abatements within code.
No.
About $177,000. Anybody like to reduce the abatements in code?
No.
No.
I hear you.
No.
Um we could reduce the $205,000 that we provide to what we consider other, uh, community entities.
These are our community partners.
CRS, the library.
Yeah.
So anybody want to look at that $205,000 and cut that out?
Can we list those, is it, it's eight, right? Eight, the eight core agencies, can we, can we list those for, um
Sure.
Our constituents?
And what does this come out, what did you?
This is gonna come out of the general fund.
No, I'm saying, like, what did you first mention? Like
The $205,000 to the, uh, community partnering
Okay, can we, okay, that's what I meant.
If you want to see a list, it's on section two, page 65, but I'll list them for you. The art museum, 40,500. CRS, 45,000. Hagerstown Municipal Band, 18,000. HNDP, 28,450. Maryland Symphony Orchestra, 17,550. Maryland Theater, 9,000. Washington County Free Library, 31,500. Washington County Historical Society, 5,000. And then 10,000 remains in unspecified agency contributions, so that if anybody comes and approaches, and typically, we've been awarding it to the hardest Civil War heritage, but if any group comes forward that this body wishes to, it's 10,000, it's not a lot, but you have 10,000 to award elsewhere. And that total is $205,000.
All right, go ahead.
No.
Yes.
No.
Which specific entities?
For the $205,000?
Out of the eight. It's in section two, page 65, and it's at the very, very bottom, it says contributions to others.
I'd say the Hager, are you talking about contributing to other agencies for that, or?
So there should be a group of eight.
So if you wanted to cut someone here for the funding, who would you
Hagerstown Municipal Band.
So that would be four.
Yeah, we cut the municipal band, that's no, uh, that's no concerts in the park then.
Okay.
Yep.
On like weekend evenings.
And, and to be clear, um, we are, I believe the Hagerstown Municipal Band, our city contribution of 18,000 is their entire fund. And so, and that's their only dollars that they get, so we, if that is a yes, like Councilwoman Oshair said, there's no concerts at the park. That is their entire budget.
It is their entire budget. It's one of the only ones
They can use me at the park on, on weekends, uh, in, uh, through the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just
So they can't be sustained.
No, I understand.
What's he, all right, let's go ahead and vote.
No.
Councilmember Oshair?
No.
No.
I'll give my no.
Council? Councilwoman Clarice?
Yes.
Okay.
So there was one.
Four more.
Are there any other entities in there that you'd like to consider cutting?
See, we have Hagerstown Municipal Band, Maryland Symphony Orchestra.
Just so you know, they allow every public school in Washington County to be a part of their program, um, every year. With that, with that funding.
Okay.
So that affects them as well.
Maybe everybody's gonna do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have three people at the table that want to cut the funding contribution to the Maryland Symphony Orchestra?
Three people?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said you wrote.
I'm a no.
So we have
He's going down each one.
Okay.
Maryland Symphony Orchestra Band?
No.
I'm a no to that one. Um You're, I know, you don't want to cut anything.
So there's one yes?
And you say Yes, so it's four nos, one yes.
Are there any other, within those groups we provide funding to, that you would like to cut?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see everybody go down a little bit. We could do Washington County Free Library, Washington County Historical Society. I mean, just a little bit, and shave what we can off of those. Would be great.
That would affect the new, um, what's it called, the new, uh, the new mobile library as well, right?
Yeah, 65.
Some of those funds are being used to fund the new mobile library as well, correct?
Um, actually, these funds, we don't make them specifically tell us at the library.
These are basically our contribution
Right, 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 but it does
In a manner to say, if they didn't exist, we'd probably do some of this.
Right.
And this, and, and
These would be a really big list.
Yeah.
It wasn't, but
Wasn't it recently, we had the discussion about how much dollars to put for these eight?
Was the first
Was the last administration?
It was the very first Tuesday in November, because I wasn't able to do it in October, but every year
Right.
It's their policy that we come in October.
But did this body approve of this budget?
Not this group.
No, we said we'd bring it back.
So these are new numbers to this
These are new numbers. Good, I'm getting my administration's No, we talked about it, I don't know who was here. What, what did we talk about?
Next item, uh, this is for the chief of police. Uh, are we fully funded for the school resource officers that we provide for the schools that happen to exist within the city of Hagerstown? Do we receive 100% reimbursement for, for those services?
The SROs that we have are fully funded, completely.
By the board of ed?
Yes. I know that we talk, uh, generically about the special events in section two, page 66, that's going up about $100,000. Are there any specific special events on that page that there are folks here that like to cut?
What is it?
Section two, page 66. And you'll notice on that page, we just haven't broken out the ones that, um, Parks and Recreation do versus the rest of
So we need to go by line item, do you, we identify what we're gonna specifically cut? We're just gonna completely cut out of that. Can you cut, like, I don't know, a little bit off their budget as well, like, with other places in the city as well, like shaving that off? Or we have to just identify, you know, and if we establish that we do have to say, you gotta cut this or else?
That, that's totally, that's totally your discretion. Yes.
Are you gonna go down everyone, Kristen, or you?
I'm just, no, if there's any one specific one in there that somebody says, yeah.
Yeah, you said the $100,000 from last year, I just, that's a lot of more money compared to what we did last year.
Right, yeah, that would be the, there's, I'll, I'll put it this way, does any, we'll vote on, does anybody want to cut anything out of that? Does anybody want to keep everything?
Looking at that, so
Most of them know, but it would be nice if, like, for example, Brittany was here that could really say, this brings in, this does really well, or this doesn't do well But I don't personally really want to cut the events, but if there's one that, that doesn't really get attendance.
I will, I will tell you, the miscellaneous downtown event line, so at the top, almost three quarters of the way down, it has $60,000 in it. That is the money that, um, Brittany and Leah utilized to put out the call, hey, you need sponsorships, here's how much I have. That is the money that, um, Brittany and Leah utilized to put out the call, hey, you need sponsorships, here's how much I have. And she was asked during the last administration to do two things. One was to increase the amount that we could give to each individual group and to increase the number of groups that we help support it. So that specific line item is a multitude, right, versus the other individual line items.
What page are you on, Michelle?
Again, that's on section two, page 66, under the, um, schedule of public functions. We really need to just change.
And I want to speak a little bit to that point. Um, during the last administration, we had a really great, uh, it's a good problem to have where we have so many groups and organizations and from, from many diverse backgrounds wanting to do events here, which goes back to my argument, there's plenty to do here, that at the time, we then had to even create a, um, a form of, or application of some sort to, uh, weigh out those requests because there were so many at one time. And then we got, you know, requests from 3,000 to 5,000. So we had to evaluate what applications we're receiving, how much dollars to give them. It was a good problem to have. Um, and so we felt as though we should increase that budget. So it felt bad telling a lot of people no when they're coming to us to say, hey, I have this event, we only need $5,000 here, we only need $500 there. Can the city at least help? So that goes to the increase of the 60,000 to, to say, you know, we'll give you something of it. Thank you there.
The other thing, the other thing, the other thing I will say in that schedule, we added Juneteenth as its own separate line item because we heard, we thought we heard clearly from this group, um, but that was something we needed to do going forward after, uh, the Dolman Group was in here most.
Last administration?
No, no.
No. When, it was this, it was this current administration.
Yeah, it was, uh, when.
Oh, yeah, sure. Oh, yeah. You were there, weren't you? Um, so it was just a couple of months ago, but it, we were, we had enough time that I was able to add that line item and add that 10,000 for you within the budget. So again, if, if we have that wrong, um, the other ones then are very specific, right? Very specific, um, activities. The A and E district event, that covers a multitude of things, but that's how much we, the 16,000 is our portion. She, Brittany tends to get grants that helps with the A and E events and, uh, does she have Main Street on her separately listed?
No.
I don't see it.
It's in a separate line item because it's not, it's, Main Street isn't an event, it's its own program, but she gets a lot of grants for that. So if we looked, if, if there was interest in decreasing what's available for A and E, it might mean we have to decrease some associated grant revenues as well.
Okay.
Just, 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 oh, just, sorry, Eric.
That's all right. No, I just wanted to comment a little bit because we've been involved in events forever, including if people remember Blues Fest and August Timber Fest, and so there's been a lot of events.
Fireworks, Fourth of July?
Yeah, and that's changed over the years, right? And so we're, a lot of departments are involved in the events. Not just public works, just Brittany, but fire, police, and parks, and, and so those costs you see in that budget are not the true cost. They're much higher. When we post for, we'll say the Caribbean event, right? We go down and we post South Potomac, that's not a lot of time and effort, but we post that, that doesn't get charged to the event. We simply do that as part of our duties. So those costs aren't captured. We have Thunder in the Square, when you're posting 130 parking spaces, that takes some time. Or if you give them some trash boxes or pick up their trash, we don't charge that to the event. So I just wanted to note that those costs in there really aren't the true cost. It's actually much higher. Okay? Our group in recreation, you know, the park side is, we maintain the parks and make them open and that sort of thing, right? Rec is, their job is to bring people to the parks. And you can't just say, hey, we have a nice park, come to it. We have to have events. Like, like Fall Fest, which brings in several thousand people, right, or Harvest Hoedown, or Fourth of July, I mean, just go down through the list. But there's a lot of costs in there, that staff, that's their job, that's not really captured here. And Brittany's the same way. That department was kind of formed to help bring events more to the downtown, and we're involved in all this also.
The, the only item listed on, on here would be under the Miss Maryland pageant. I know that we, um, enter into a contract arrangement. It's, it's the city, it's the county, it's the Maryland Theater, and it's the people who host the program. So it's a collaborative contract. We might still have another year to go in the contract, so 20, fiscal year 26, you might not be able to adjust that because of the contract term. I can't remember when it ends. It's either for the coming up fiscal year 26, or it's for fiscal year 27 and soon, but I just can't. So if you can avoid that 13,000, if you want to look at the rest.
I'd be remiss without saying, a group that's heavily involved in our events is auxiliary police. These are a group of people that are volunteers. They get paid, I think there's might be a couple of paid people, for the most part, they're doing it for free. And they're the ones, are primarily the ones out there blocking roads, helping direct traffic and that sort of thing.
They do a great job.
So it's, so again, I just want to say, those costs aren't the true cost. It's, it's actually much, much higher than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to see anything cut out of that?
No.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I had, there's some things I'd like to, you know, see that.
Which ones?
Uh, I think the Miss Maryland pageant, I'm looking, I think that Oktoberfest, A and E district events, so.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Would, would you say Miss Maryland pageant?
But I thought you said Miss Maryland.
It takes to the arts, I mean, it's only.
It takes to the arts, Oktoberfest, Miss Maryland pageant, sorry.
Uh, yeah, whereas, so we, August Timber Fest is at the top, but it doesn't have anything with it anymore. We, that's on me. We should have hit in that line. That, that, the first dollar amount at the top actually goes with A and E district, right?
Okay.
Okay, so, so everybody.
And the reason you feel like those should be cut is why exactly?
Well, I want to take any money we can for the residents here, that's why I want to cut it, so.
But everybody was, there was four votes that nobody wanted to cut anything.
Right.
Okay, okay, so we have.
But Councilman was listing, um, the events that he would propose to cut, and I couldn't, I can't hear.
I know, but he proposed to cut those events, but everybody else already said that they don't want to cut any, so it's going to be a four to one.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary.
Cut that short.
I can't hear now.
All right, anything else?
There are three, uh, departments out of the 16 that are non-public safety, uh, that show within the sheet a notable uh, increase which could absorb some portion of the 40 of the $110, uh, in average savings. So finance and accounting, does anybody like to cut personnel and finance and accounting?
No.
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 Yes, I'd be willing to look at.
It's supposed to go to one.
No.
How many do we currently have in financing? How many?
So the increase here was the approval we got to take the prior ARPA grant funded position and make it permanent. So there's no more ARPA funding. We have one grant person for the entirety of the city. So that person would be nine. I currently have a vacancy.
Okay.
Thank you. Counting myself. Because customer service and billing are separate. Okay, from the peanut gallery, I know you were secretly hoping, they were like, we get a new budget person next year. They were all voting. Look at them. One to you.
We could forego.
Two boxes of tissues for you.
Contractual, uh, proceedings and information technology next year.
I, I caveat this with, we already signed the contract, we entered into the agreement for the new one, our new software vendor. And our current vendor, we're not set to be out of munis. That is by far the two costs that's driving it.
When did we engage in that new contract? When did we engage in that new?
We already engaged in it. We already signed it. We already paid.
This body did that, right?
They already came, did their orientation, we said yes, yeah. That was months ago.
Uh, planning department, we're adding, uh, a personnel, correct?
Correct. It's in the budget and hasn't been discussed at the table yet.
We could forego adding, uh, that individual, uh, which would create some, uh, savings within that department.
No.
No.
Yes, I think Mr. Bachmann was to move it.
Are you, Kristen, are you, are you RIS or no?
No, we're adding two planning positions, but we're adding one planning position to assist with the current planning position to handle development and growth. In addition to the zoning administrator position, which will have to be filled.
So we have, so we have one part, one position for planning that's filled.
Right.
Which is currently Stephen Bachmann. Then you have two current vacancies. Those vacancies were Kathleen Marr and Joanna Wu, because she's not going. So those two are, and they asked for one new position. So whatever the, whether they call them planners, senior planners, assistant zoning administrator, whatever that looks like. So they've got two. This would allow them that extra person. No matter what we decide here, they would still have to come back to the table and separately have a work session discussion to, for that very thing. What is it, what is it, does it look like? And it would still then go to a regular session for a formal and separate vote, just like any other additional overtime position. Okay, just a.
So what do you got?
I think we had four noes.
Four noes, okay.
So our total savings would have been around $75,000. Okay. Um. Next item. Uh, non-union pay scale, uh, as was mentioned earlier. And, uh, we received, uh, communication regarding, uh, to, uh, not provide uh, any pay increase for the non-union, uh, employees next year.
Well, disclosure, non-union means those hourly employees. It means supervisors of staff that have already received. It means the same supervisors in the electric department that were here 36 and 48 hours straight through the last.
Well, I want to make it clear, I'm not talking about our utility rate personnel that are non-union.
They are part of our non-union scale.
General fund.
They, okay. So it would, it would include all of your community staff for public safety.
General fund. If we did that for all of the non-union personnel within the general fund that are non-public safety would be the other departments listed in the non-public safety section.
Okay.
That's what I hear as being on the table.
No. No.
I don't remember anybody bringing that one up here to the table.
Yeah, I don't.
It was.
I feel like that was raised.
Okay.
Well, we talked about the hiring freeze part.
Yeah.
But what are we? It was almost, it was five. It is five. It is five.
Do we have three noes? Thank you.
Cut that. Unallocated general expense. Okay. The contingency. All right, we took the contingency from 73,000 to 504,000. Uh, we could reduce that contingency back down, uh, which would remove the funding that we may need depending on how this body determines to proceed with pending, uh, negotiations for employee contracts.
Which are ongoing and we're trying to negotiate a good date.
So let, let's just be real honest, that's pretty much the fire contract, right?
And some of 1540.
Some of 1540.
Yeah.
You would have no more room for negotiation, so no.
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 Captain Barlowshire?
Councilman Flair?
Say no, just for the remove of negotiation. We do need that, so. I agree with Councilmember Anderson.
Parking fund, healthcare, property management. I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Oh, wait, I'm gonna be, sorry, Michelle, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm gonna be really frank here, guys. The reason why I said no to everything, again, I beat myself over the head last night looking at the numbers. Where can we cut? Where can we make sense? And again, none of it seemed to be the responsible move going into the next fiscal year. The only thing that made sense was to not, what, how, how do I say, kind of like, um, put less stress on everyone by allowing them to understand that we would not increase it going further. It's almost like, okay, there's an increase coming, but I do have some kind of safety net that I do know within the next four years, five years, I will not see an increase. And that's why, again, that was the only solution I came with.
Good.
So, um, two items. The second one I forget at the moment, so I'll start with, uh, the first one. Um. And, you know, we didn't talk a lot about our utility rates, right? Um, which are, which are increasing, and I hear you say that's coming, but we're, we're, I don't see this group making significant, uh, changes to that at this hour. Um, essentially with a, a rate analysis on the horizon. Um, and the fact that, that exactly like those departmental functions within your general fund, they have to be funded. Now, the only difference between the two and, and I'm going to pick on parks because we've picked on it all evening, is parks is a $2 million budget, right? It's spread across 20,000 customers, right? And that's about $100 a year a customer. So the only difference between how you apply that in taxes and how you apply it in utility is you don't apply a base rate to the parks. So as a customer of parks, I know I'm paying the base rate of $100. Now, we could, we could look in this budget. We could say, you know what, the base rate to the average parks customer is going to be $70. And then you could adjust all of those rates, like you were talking about earlier, you could adjust all of those rates for the things that people are going to use in the parks. So I may not use the golf course. So I think the golf course should be $38 and not $18, because that extra rate should go to that individual using that extra park. But that parks person that uses, uh, the golf course may say, wait a second, I don't rent pavilions for family functions at City Park. Why does he pay $35 at City Park to rent a pavilion? I don't know if that's the number, just using it off the top of my head. You say, that rate should be $110 because you gotta have a guy there and he's got to empty the trash, et cetera, et cetera. I just show up to course and then leave after playing. The only difference is you can't as definitively apply the activities of the customer of the myriad of things they do in parks the way that you can look at a customer of a water system and say, I know exactly what you do, I know exactly how you use it, and so I know exactly how I'm going to charge you. But we're not talking about those utility rates that are going up probably more dollar for dollar than a tax rate, and we don't do it because we don't talk about taxes as it applies to customers. Even though we look at those departments in exactly the same way. We could have a base rate for police, right? Or fire, and say, hey, this is the base rate, but this person calls, you know, X number of times a year and says, we're going to make the calls, X dollars. Now, you can't do that because state law doesn't allow it. It'd be real hard to figure out, but that's pretty much the same thing. And so I, I don't look at this a lot differently in terms of the water has to get there, right? And so I know that there's going to be a cost associated with that, no differently than the police have to get there and the parks have to be available. And we could, we can make some tough decisions and start closing a bunch of that, uh, uh, stuff that, that people use, uh, but I haven't heard them. And, and I think that, that, um, at the end of the day, you know, when you look at the comparison between those, uh, cost differences between the two, they're really not that much different. Uh, now, I don't see, I don't see as a customer, you know, what I'm paying finance for. But I'm sure I could sit there and I could extrapolate a cost as a customer within my tax dollar of what that is. And they could say, hey, here's how much you use us for that. One of the big differences is, unlike water and sewer, police don't have a backfill. So I could look at code enforcement, I could say, well, that's pretty much self-supporting. And you're right, you could look at permits fees, that offsets some of engineering. I don't use engineering a lot. We charge the people that do, no differently than we charge the higher, well, we should be charging, the higher water users, a higher rate for higher usage of that system above those base, uh, provisions. Here's the second point. I knew, I knew unequivocally over the last seven years that we did one thing that allowed us to proceed through these fairly good times of economic growth without adjusting a tax rate. And that's this. We had a police department that operated with a sub-level of manpower that the public wanted, that we wanted. And no matter what we did marginally to change that, it just didn't seem to be enough to increase the ability for that department to grow to the need or to the degree that I think they wanted, that we wanted, that the citizens wanted. But because we had that sort of savings by the police department not costing that much over that period, we were able to absorb the other cost increases, all the other stuff we do within the general fund with those things like assessment adjustments and with those things like, uh, development growth. However, we took a big gamble. We took a big gamble about a year and a half ago when the chief came in and said, hey, I got an idea to get our apartment up to the levels that you guys want. And we said at that time, if you can find a way to do that, we will pay the piper when that comes due. If you can accomplish that. We took a big gamble and we put some big numbers on a piece of paper that the chief brought forward, and it paid off. Right? We saw an additional number of personnel that I hadn't seen in 10 years before that. So whatever gamble we took paid off. And now that is coming due. And if what we're hearing out there is that folks won investment in that public safety, this budget. And if what we're hearing out there is that folks want investment in that public safety, this budget absolutely shows that. And you can't have both. You can't have your largest, most expensive department sort of limp along so you can afford the rest, right? And at the same time, have that succeed and not have it cost more. It came due, and it came due here in this budget. And I accept that because that's what people wanted, and I have no problem looking at the public in the eye as taxpayers just like me and saying, that's gonna cost me a little more money next year. That's a reality. But the gamble to improve and increase our public safety is a result of that, and I'm okay with it.
So, one Tuesday, next Tuesday, the twentieth, we'll bring back, we'll have um we'll have some more budget discussions, but we will be centered on some of the utility funds. We'll bring back the three seventy-five reduction um for the property revenue, take it from Invest Heggars Town, decrease economic redevelopment. And later that evening, or at the beginning, actually, we'll do later, but that evening, we'll do the introduction ordinance for both the property tax rate, which will be at one point zero five seven, which is how it is reflected in the current proposed budget, as well as the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Because I think after we went through these lines for the last two hours, I think that's what we ended.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Good summary?
Mm-hmm.
Sound right?
We're good?
Yeah, I do want to say one more thing. Um, so, and I'm, I'll say this again, with this new administration, I feel like sometimes we need to understand how things work. So um when Councilmember Burnett read the motion, um, I think what happened is we had, we needed more discussion. So what, and it seemed like after, it was like, you know, the audience was like, yay, yay. Because what I think is, a lot of times the citizens just think that the pass. So it wasn't till I read Christian's email and I realized like, oh, this was truly just for us to introduce it, it didn't pass. So a lot of times, and everybody's been truly helpful since we got in these seats. But sometimes we need that understanding of how that works, you know what I mean? Like, you know, if somebody would have been like, this is just to introduce it, not passing it. So sometimes we need that reassurance of what we are to do or how the protocol is to work. So we know how to move accordingly and not feel like, you know, because I, I feel like a lot of us left out here like, what just happened? So it was really disturbing because we did not understand that movement. So it, it's imperative that, and if I need to sit down with somebody again to know like.
Sure.
How things work, what it means when this happens or this happens, I'm okay with that, and I will come in and we'll come downtime to do it.
So thank you for that, and I think one of the, one of the things I just want to say from a staff perspect, staff perspective is when it comes to uh formal actions like ordinances and motions and resolutions, and the body is starting to read, staff is not permitted to interject, we cannot interrupt that flow. That is for the body at large. And when, when, and to be fair to Councilmember Burnett, you know, to say that, oh, she was a yes vote, that's not what she did, she read the motion. You have to have a second, and that means you second it so that it opens the discussion amongst the body at the table. Staff cannot inter, staff cannot interfere, we cannot stop, we cannot halt.
So for example, even if whoever would have said, I second that, that was just, so then after that, we could have had.
Yes.
Any discussions that we need to have.
At the point.
So we just needed some more clarity of that, and I think that's important, especially moving forward, that.
And, and once you open that, you have the discussion, you can table it, you can vote a yes, you can vote a no. During your discussions, you can have questions and you can ask staff questions and staff can respond. But again, staff doesn't, that is, that is a strict action, it is literally for the administration body here at the table.
And that is per Roberts Rule of Order.
Thank you.
Which is incorporated by the reference in your rules of procedure.
So like, for example, say, staff can't.
I, we weren't about to tell you.
But our fellow counsel, like say, you know, even if Alshire was still here, it would have been like, listen, y'all, this is just to that he have said that, like, you know.
Only once it's second.
Oh, once, so it's that second that.
Yeah, the open to discussion, and that's why, and that's why I couldn't say it.
So the thing is, you know, at the very, very beginning, we sat in a meeting for hours.
And we couldn't remember anything. And, but to be fair, I asked twice, I asked three times, and Michelle went, Michelle, I told you, move on to the other funds, and I'm like, okay.
And to be clear, if you are going to second a motion and you do not support the motion, you should absolutely say, I will second it only for discussion.
Okay.
You say I second it, you're pretty much.
Regardless, we're gonna have, because I'm always gonna ask for a discussion.
What I'm saying is you can't vote against it if you simply second it. First, if you make a motion and second it without saying specifically, I'm seconding it only for discussion, you have to vote in favor.
See, I think, and I think as a new body, we, what, like, we, I don't, we might have been, I don't know, people said in that meeting that we had at the very beginning, but I don't recall us having that, like, hey, this is to do this, this is to do this, this is how you do this. So that's what I'm saying, like, even if I, you know, but thank you for that understanding.
City Administrator.
Okay, and I'm very sorry that I'm sitting here on my phone, but I legitimately have a quick text to our city administrator who really, like, I, I, I need everybody to know, thoughts and prayers go out, they are dealing with a very serious issue, right? And I can't say it enough, please send thoughts and prayers, but I will tell you, Tuesday night, I was getting texts, he was watching, and he was like, are you, what are you doing, Michelle? Um, no, so again, please keep him in your thoughts and prayers, I don't really have any other comments. Thank you for this evening and for taking the time to go through these lines.
Councilwoman Anderson.
I have no comments for tonight.
Councilmember or Councilman Flaherty.
Yeah, I would just say, it was, I think that was a good discussion, and, you know, the more we're giving, the more we're talking about it. I just want to, you know, watch out for the residents and their best interest, and, you know, it's a hard decision for all of us, and we all want what's best for everybody here. I believe everybody in this body does support that, so.
Councilwoman Bell.
Um, no, just, I don't really have much to say, I just want us to move together as a body, like, it's okay for us to not agree on everything, but, you know, we do it in a way that we have respect for one another, we understand one another, we understand every, I, I feel like, sitting here, we understand everybody's stance on a lot of things. So it's okay, but we just need to move forward with that unity, I feel like we need that, you know, unity, I don't know, maybe we need to all do a team building up. Just saying, but that's it.
Councilwoman Asher. Councilwoman Burnett.
Oh, I think I talked a lot this uh, this evening, um, I will say that having these discussions, again, is very difficult. Um, but I do feel like this was very productive.
Yes.
Um, this was very, um, like I've been asking for from the body, uh, clear guidance for staff going line by line with their yea or nays has been very helpful. Um, not only for us to understand how we stand on each item, but also for the public to hear, um, you know, these discussions and what was up for a cut, what was not, et cetera. Um, it's very, 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 this was very, very good. Um, and I would suggest for next year, um, budget conversations, we do something like this similar, but more uh early, earlier and not so close to the timeline, um, but definitely have like a more um focused discussion going line by line again and evaluating how these changes impacts departments across the board and to our taxpayers and to our citizens. Thank you.
I'll, I'll jump right on that as well, um, that's the reason, exactly the reason why I called this meeting today. I wanted to sort this out, hash it out, and I one hundred percent appreciate every one of you showing up and, and having this discussion. Um, with that, do we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion I hang tonight? Okay, we're adjourned.